Jane's got it. Marion, Jane's got it.
Oh, good.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
It's been at a lot of meetings lately that everybody says hello or that, "Good morning." Welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, at 8:30 a.m. in City Council chambers. At this time, I don't know, I haven't seen Father Brady yet. So, we're gonna ask Councilwoman Coker to do the prayer, and then we'll ask Colonel Lee, even though it's one day after our Veterans Day, to lead us in the pledge. If we all please stand.
Okay, we begin in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude and reverence during this Armed Forces Week, honoring the brave men and women who serve and have served in our military. We thank you and honor their courage, the selfless sacrifice of those who put their lives on the line for their comrades and country, and their unwavering dedication to protecting our freedoms and upholding peace. Greater love hath no man than this, that a man lay down his life for his friends, John 15:13. Bless our service members, those on the front lines, those in support, and those who have returned home. Surround them with your protection, strengthen them with your presence, and grant peace to their families who carry their own quiet burdens with strength and love. Lord, we also lift up our leaders, both military and civilian alike. Grant them wisdom rooted in justice, compassion, and humility. May decisions reflect your guidance and serve the common good. Inspire leadership with integrity and to always seek peace over conflict, truth over convenience, and unity over division. We ask all this in the name of the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Colonel Lee?
Please show me the pledge.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
The first item on the agenda this morning is a proclamation for Farm City Week, November 10th through the 22nd, 2025. Whereas agriculture continues to be a major contributor to the economy of Manatee County with an approximate market value of agricultural sales of $322 million and more than 213,000 acres, or 37% of Manatee County land used for production agriculture, which includes vegetable crops, livestock and forage, citrus, ornamental horticulture, commercial fishing, and marine aquaculture and other products. And whereas this year's Farm City Week celebration will be Keeping Ag Alive in 2025, to educate residents with an emphasis on youth, on the importance, the value, and the career opportunities found in global agriculture, food and fiber, and natural resource systems. And whereas agriculture producers have a long history of preserving natural resources, farmlands contribute to green spaces, providing habitat for native and endangered species of animals, reptiles, birds, plants, and trees. And farmlands also provide resources to clean water through natural filtration systems. And whereas the first Manatee County Farm City Week celebration was sponsored by the Bradenton Quanis Club in 1955, and the tradition has continued to be supported and funded by Bradenton Quanis for the past 70 years. And whereas the Farm City Week Committee supports this year's theme by contributing to educational opportunities for students. These activities include AgVenture, where Manatee County 4-H provides educational opportunities for over 1,200 Manatee County youths in agricultural awareness, essay and speech contests, and the Beef Workshop and Prospect Show, preparing youths to show their livestock at the Manatee County Fair. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as Mayor of the City of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 10th through the 22nd, 2025, as Farm City Week, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of agriculture and its contributions to the local economy, our environment, and in the development of youth, and to participate in the many events that are offered during the annual celebration of agriculture in Manatee County. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. And obviously, who do we have coming today to present this to us? As most always, I think we've missed you last year, but we're glad you're here this year.
Well, thank you very much. Unstable is a feature of a country that has lost its taste in agriculture. My name's Ralph Garrison, Manti County agricultural activist, longtime past president of Manti County Farm Bureau, longtime chairman of Farm City Week. I know a little bit about agriculture in Manatee County with it, and we're really proud of what we do in the home base here in Manatee County. This is the 70th year that we're celebrating Farm City Week. And Farm City Week brings awareness between the Earl residents and the city folk, between farmers and the city dwellers. So we like to go ahead and make some remarks, excuse me, this morning about that. It's kinda cold when I was saddling up my horse early this morning, with it and all. Manti County's heritage is agriculture. Our forefathers settled on the banks of the Manatee River, grew food crops nearby, put the crops on the boats, sent them up the river, up into the Gulf of Mexico to Cedar Key. Why Cedar Key? Well, that's where Mr. Plant ended the railroad at the time. So we have a deep history that goes back to the 1880s of growing agriculture in Manti County. Today, we in Manti County continue to grow safe, affordable, and abundant crops. Back to the boats going up the Manatee River, that's where the city of Bradenton has a big influence and everything. Palmetto had started with the agriculture, and their history was over on the north side of the river. But Manti County, or Bradenton, came in with the Fogarty brothers when they started building the boats. And these were the same boats that they would use to take the fruits and vegetables and everything up to the train. It was a big boost and everything when that train came to Cedar Key. It just saved a lot of time, and it's really expanded into the first commercialization of farming in Manatee County. It brought it forth that way with it. So you can imagine where Fogarty, some of us, maybe all of you know where the Fogartys ended up settling there by 26th Street, if I'm not mistaken. Right, Marion? Right in there and all. And they were a big asset because they had to have the boat with it. So the city of Bradenton played a big part in, you know, the early history of agriculture. Now today, I don't know if there's much agriculture in the city of Bradenton at all. It's kinda gotten more of urban. That's the reason I'm here, is to tell you all that there's a few farms left out east. It's getting pretty urban out east also, this day and age. And so farming is a big impact to the economy of Manti County. It was mentioned in their proclamation, it's $322 million. That's cash sales at the farms. If you go ahead and include some other things, which I'll talk about in a minute and everything, it's much larger. This Farm City Week, as we gather with family and friends, let us count our blessings and give thanks to the bounty we enjoy and to this celebration. The safe, plentiful food that is available to us, the products used to produce from food. And this is eye-opening. Clothing, housing, medicines, fuel, and other products we use on a daily basis just did not appear in a store. I got a brochure from Farm Bureau, and it talks about exactly how the money of $100 or $1, however you wanna say it, breaks down and everything. And the farmer really gets very few and all like that. He ends up with 20 cents out of the dollar. It's simply because of all these other people who are involved with it and everything. You have your labor, which is the largest cost in agriculture, and you have your little things like advertising, taxes, transportation, and this and that and all. But when you think of it, the farmer only comes down to 20 cents on the dollar when you go ahead and you buy your food. The wholesalers and brokers, they all take into that and all with it. As we mentioned in the resolution about the Tuesdays activity, it's gonna be at the Leadership Manatee Tours coming up, the Bradenton Farmers Market. We have a farm tour coming up. I'll go over those in just a minute and everything. But it's amazing to see, it's the 4-H doing their group of kids and children and everything at the fairgrounds and all. And the 4-H has really picked up this year, Marion. They're up to like 1,200 kids, it's double what they've done in the past and everything. So that's caduce to them. In a few weeks, as we celebrate Farm City Week, let us remember these vital Farm City partnerships that have done so much to improve the quality of our lives. Rural and urban communities working together have made the most of our rich agricultural resources and have made a significant contribution to our health, well-being, the strength of Manti County's economy. For this, we give thanks. You know, like the old commercial says, "You gotta eat," right? You gotta eat with it. As mentioned, Farm City Week is Keep Agriculture Alive in '25. I want to bring your attention to the coffee mugs that we gave and the ag facts that are in there and everything. Enjoy them. They could be a collector's item. So I think they come to you about every single year with it. And the facts and everything, agricultural facts is very eye-opening also. Now, let's go over a few activities and all. Friday, they're having a farm tour, and that's open to the public. And they're going out to West County, which only has three or four agricultural entities left in there. But it's a lot of history. Growing up here in Bradenton, I remember in the late 50s, that area called Village Green. Is that in the city, Jean?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Man on man, tomatoes, gladiolas, we're all, vegetables all grown out there. If you ever, it's that nice sandy, loamy soil that we have in Manti County. If you ever go out there, the landscaping's always marvelous right there. They got perfect soils to grow there. There's trees and shrubs in their lawns and everything in there. And that was my first recollection of farming and everything. And then, of course, it's called Manti Farms now. They still have an entity out there. Cortez are visiting. Visiting Cortez is part of agriculture, it's aquaculture. And they play a vital, it's a vital industry in Manti County with it. And Orban's Nursery Plant Nursery out there, along with Palmasola Botanical Gardens out there. They're gonna have a great time on the tour with it. We got Heather with Bradenton Farmers Market inviting the FFA and the 4-H to come down. And this is Saturday, I think, and everything. So I don't know what they're doing. In the past, they brought a cow and a milking machine and just they usually get a pretty good draw, a pretty good amount of attention to what they have. It's all kids-oriented with it. So that'll be Saturday. Many of y'all have been invited to the Bradenton Quanis Luncheon. We were talking about that earlier. And that's on Tuesday. I hope you can attend that. That's when we introduce the Agricultural of the Year Award. A Leadership Manatee Tour is going on November 19th, and they are going to see out east different agricultural entities. We have a Hall of Fame Luncheon on Friday, where Mr. Courtney, he's an old timer compared to all of us, I think. He came to Manti County from Oklahoma in the 1880s. His whole family did, on a covered wagon. And some of the family stayed in Palmetto, the rest of the family moved to Arcadia. And Mr. Courtney was a wheeler and dealer, and he was a politician too, I guess, goes along with that. But he loved to broker and sell vegetables. And he was one of the first main people in Manti County that would put those products on the boat and send it to Cedar Key. He is very innovative about that approach. And he was the first one that really started agricultural, big time, getting exported from Manatee County. And then on the 22nd, we end up Farm City Week, which is called a Beef Workshop. It's where the FFA leaders can come in and go and get some tips. They have a lot of veterinarians there of how to groom and how to feed, and how to be able to get the most out of their buck during the Manti County Fair when they have the steer show. And the pigs too, and they all get to get a show with it. So I appreciate it again, the opportunity to come here and everything. I did bring a box of tomatoes this time with me. This is the first crop out of Manti County. It came out of dewet. I'll let you take them upstairs. You all can divvy them up or throw them at each other. These tomatoes are not quite ripe yet. They may hold till close to Thanksgiving. My tip is, do not put it in the refrigerator. Leave it out on your counter, let it ripen by itself. When it feels good and soft and really looks that dark red color, which will come, it'll come naturally and everything, then go ahead and slice it open and eat it. They'll be juicy and delicious. I have one more quote I'm gonna leave you with and everything. I guess it's a quote that I use all the time and everything. As we go about, we meet with friends and family at Thanksgiving. We all have a bountiful amount of food. Let's think of where it comes from and everything like that. We have a wonderful country that God gave us, that we can grow agricultural crops in. And we're very, very blessed to have that opportunity. We're very blessed to have this sandy, loamy soil that comes from the northern part of Manti County, all the way down to the celery fields in Sarasota that we can use for farming and all. So let's count our blessings this Thanksgiving. And never speak poorly about the farmer if your mouth's full of food. Thank you very much. I appreciate the proclamation.
Thank you, Ralph. Just a couple of comments. In the 70s, when I was in middle school, his name was Mr. Jackson, and he was the ag teacher there at Harley Middle School. And we had, we grew corn, and then we sold it on Saturdays. And so I was in that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Then in high school, got to Bay Shore High School in '80, and Mr. Hewitt was there, Henry Hewitt.
Henry Hewitt.
And Henry, we had pigs, we had cows, and we had almost 20 acres of strawberry fields that we grew right there at Bay Shore High School. And so I went through all of that, FFA and all, growing up. And this week, being at a couple of events at the school board and different things. And when we were in school in those days, there were certain classes you had to take, at least one of. You didn't have to take it all. But I think with what you do to continue to bring this to light of our history, and sometimes if we don't bring up history, good or bad, you tend to repeat the bad things more than the good things. But just thinking about that, we just wanna say thank you for all that you do. And we did miss you last year when you weren't here. But it was a matter of just saying thank you and what you do to the school system, which is educating our younger people about the past and the current and the future if we don't do good things. So I just wanna say thank you. And I know that, thinking back, that was probably some of the most fun times I had in school was with Mr. Jackson and Mr. Hewitt, which were great friends after. And unfortunately, both of them have passed now. But just great people helping and doing things. And it wasn't about the money at that point. It was about teaching the future generations. And even though I don't do that, I love it. And I think back of fond memories and am glad that we're still keeping that in the forefront, so.
Thank you. That was a fun period in the life of Manti County back then. Especially at Bay Shore High, you could go across the street. I think Manti Fruit Company, they donated a lot of land to grow all those crops. And you'd be able to leave the campus a little bit and go over there and learn an awful lot of new, with those gentlemen. And we do appreciate the school board. We have a very strong FFA program in Manatee County. And that's through the school board's assistance and everything that operates and everything. I met with, for example, one of the team leaders at Braden River High School. 400 students are involved in an FFA program with it. So they get to learn a little. And that's the importance of what we have with this AgVenture. We started with 200 kids, went 400, went 600. Now Alex wants to put in 1,200 kids in this thing. It's mainly third graders. And I always participated in it for years and years and all with it. And one of the teachers asked their child, "Where does milk come from?" You know, "We're going on this tour. Where does milk come from?" And little Johnny, you know Johnny, he's always first answer and everything. Johnny raises his hand, he says, "It comes from Publix."
Thank you, and we appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much for your remarks too. Have a great Thanksgiving.
You too. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ralph.
Presentation scheduled for today?
All right, so we'll go to citizen comment. Citizen comment, we accept it during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda items, agenda items, future agenda items, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. So I do not have any cards for citizen comment. Do not have any cards. All right, moving on. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and staff is requesting approval of items A through AH.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Earl Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the consent agenda, A through...
Just tell me what you want to remove, probably.
It's easier. Yes, it is B.
Remove B?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion from Councilwoman Moore to approve the consent agenda minus B. So this is her second. No, Ms. Coker? All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
Approved, five to zero. Ms. Moore?
Mr. Russell has, this has come up before because I'm currently serving on the Board of Step Up Suncoast. Mr. Russell has given me information to determine maybe more, with some more confirmation, that I might potentially be able to vote on things when it's a nonprofit board. However, I have not had the opportunity to really digest that. So I think in abundance of caution, I should probably abstain.
All right, so then we'll look for a motion with, to approve Consent Agenda Item B. Is there a motion for that? All right, Ms. Coachman, is there a second? All right. And then we will... Any further discussion? We've heard Ms. Moore's information. And hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four is abstaining. Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Carries four to zero. And of course, any of the proper paperwork will be done to take care of the reasoning and all of that. So perfect. Approved four to zero. All right, Madam Clerk?
Item 7A is the public hearing for Resolution 25-100 relating to revising the operation and maintenance agreement with Woodard and Curran.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, this item is basically an extension of the Woodard and Curran. It's an outsourcing agreement that we had previously approved in March. I believe it was March of last year. And what that was basically, was we had Woodard and Curran, who's here today, some of their representatives, and they're here often, as you probably recall, have had them take over the wastewater treatment program itself. But wastewater is composed of two major components, which of course is the treatment facility itself and the series of processing and heavy equipment of clarifiers and ox ditches and tertiary treatment and everything in between. That's what we call inside the fence. But outside the fence, basically, there's a whole collection system that is described in one of the exhibits to the contract that's attached here too, to the Resolution Number 25-100 before you that we're seeking approval of. With that, it really highlights the magnitude and scope of the collection system itself. It consists of 185 miles of gravity sewer. That's six inches to 30 inches, which is a big sewer line itself, 30 inches when you think about it. And it also has a great deal of what's called force mains. And force mains operate off a system of pump or list stations. We have 64 of those in the city. There's a series of 4,200 roughly manholes that are attached to this. And there's relief valves, odor control, and all types of upkeep, maintenance, and service programs. The city does that basically with two major sections within Public Works. And those two major sections are gonna be the collection section and the mechanical section. Those two sections basically are composed of the better part of probably about, I'd say 23, 24 employees. I believe there's 14 in mechanical and about 10 in collections. And those employees basically have to service our system. When you look at that service, it's defined in Exhibit B2, which is the facility operations itself that deals with the daily operations of the collection system, the repair and maintenance of the system. There's project management that is very complex. It has to be done when we decide we're going to redo a collection system. There's information systems and technology that's applicable to it. In the exhibit, there's operating costs and expenses that are displayed, biotoxins, reporting requirements that have to be filed with DEP, other regulatory agencies. The capital support that's being done by Woodard and Curran is a major component. I think it's no secret to anybody that we're kinda in a face-it-and-fix-it mode. And that face-it-and-fix-it mode deals greatly, greatly, not exclusively, but greatly with our wastewater system, both from the perspective of the wastewater treatment components itself being improvements that are made both operationally and facility-wise at the wastewater treatment plant. When you go out there, you see some major construction projects, just to name four right off the bat. Our clarifier, basically, which is a $16 million improvement, is almost complete. It'll increase our capacity significantly and our wasting and the separation of solids, which is very important to the overall process. We have a temporary EQ tank that's the size, literally, of probably four football fields. And it can hold 3 million gallons. It gives us the ability to basically store water temporarily, begin the processing of it by aeration and other types of processes, biochemical-type processes, and then basically treat it when the flow isn't quite as high. We're all familiar with the problems we've had regarding capacity. The plant's rated about nine to 10 million gallons a day. And during high flows of last year, which of course are anomaly, but those flows reach 30 million gallons per day. It's not uncommon during rainy season to hit 14 million gallons a day. Unlike the county that has reject-reuse capacity and storage capacity with other EQ-type basins when the water first comes in, we never have that. It was never designed, never put into our plant. So whatever comes through the headworks has to be processed currently. It doesn't have a diversion capability or short-term storage, an interim treatment component. And so those two improvements are significant to adding to that particular upgrade. And Woodard and Curran has done a really good job of working with our engineering and construction services staff who are here as well. Many of you know that Colonel Lee himself is an engineer and has environmental background with these types of things. Mr. Ferentz, we've bought on. He's an expert in collections in particular, also water distribution, but came over after 30 years with the county. I've never seen anybody be able to pick up a system so quick and really run with it like he's worked here 30 years. So thank you, Mr. Ferentz. And we have our engineering staff, who's done a great job with Kim and her team. They're the people I've been looking for for five years, frankly, and I'm getting them in the right place. But this initiative is also to get people in the right place because we're in a capital expansion, capital improvement phase right now. And in order to do that, by taking the operations and maintenance piece away a little bit from our main kinda lane of travel and moving more towards capital improvement, construction, and improvement of systems, it provides us more bandwidth. And we've added additional bandwidth and expertise in this regard with a couple other folks we've been bringing in, finding the money for these things. Can I approach you this corner?
Sure.
You got it?
Yeah, I think I got it, maybe. What do you need? This is a list of the capital projects that Public Works and Engineering is putting together. I believe there's about 34 different projects that are on there. And all of these projects are fairly costly projects. They range anywhere from They range anywheres from, you know, hypothetically, ten, ten million dollars to probably two hundred and fifty thousand. But you talk about multitasking, that's what we're able to do now on the can face it and fix it thing, is try to hit everything that we're dealing with, um, across the board as relates to water, clean water, drinking water, and the like. And this helps us do that a little bit. Um, in order to do that, you need a lot of money. And typically, traditionally, that money would come from a rate. You'd go to your taxpayer, your, your, your rate payer base. And it's interesting because if you looked at the press the last couple of days, there's been several articles that have come up on my news break about Manatee County and their need to increase their rates. And those rates they're talking about are proposal for a five-year increase of approximately eight percent plus a year to meet their five-year capital goal of having to meet all of their needs and requirements. You think about that and it's astronomical number. It probably adds up to over a billion dollars in capital needs. And we're probably on the area, because I always face things and we're about a tenth the size of the county in a lot of ways and, and everything else, w- w- we're, we're probably proportionately similarly situated. And the county has been capitalizing and, and repairing and replacing a lot of their assets. But as it grows, it grows up on the east, as Ralph Garrison told us about, you know, there's more needs. Our problem is that we hadn't over time really kept up. And we're doing a rate study now, but the rate is the last thing we want to hit. What we want to use is that term that the European economist called leverage. Of course, it's pronounced leverage here. It's really the use of other people's money, whether it's a little bit of debt, whether it's grants, whether it's direct appropriations, um, and, and a whole host of other funding that comes both through the federal and the state government. Um, I have a telephone call with, with DEP and SRF regarding a one point... It's one point six billion that deals with clean drinking and stormwater. Um, uh, it's actually one point two and then, and the rest deals with resiliency. And we applied for that funding. We're, we're, we're positive, uh, when I say positive, we're viewing it in a positive manner that we will, we will obtain substantial funding from various federal sources that are related to the hurricanes, both Milton and, um, and, and, uh...
Eileen.
Eileen.
Thank you. Eileen, uh, that were related to, to the EPA. The funds come basically through federal EPA, um, and federal FEMA down to the state to DEP. And they get administered through the SRF, the State Revolving Fund. That's the state bank. They're, they're the best bank in the state. They process more and bigger amounts of money than any, any commercial bank that we probably have in the state. And they're good at it. That's why they're the ones handling it. We have SRF funding for our three major, um, projects over at the wastewater treatment plant and the like. So this all fits together. And, and I don't want to belabor the point because now I have to go into basically what the statute requires. And this is an amendment to an existing, uh, uh, contract that we have. But again, crossing over and, and furthering on into the component of the collection system. Um, and, and, and as it relates to that, I will incorporate by reference all of the information that I provided back on the prior resolution that was approved because it handles and hits a lot of the same subjects. But I, I need to talk about, um, about ten different statutory requirements. So the most recent available income and expense statement for the utility is what I'm going to have to get. And I think I have that in the file right over here. I'll need L mode, Ms. Milton. Or do you have that?
Does Mr. Williams have that?
I have the paper version.
Looks like you had...
You got the paper version? That's it. Yours is good.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you look at the screen?
Is that it?
Yep, that's it, thanks. Apologize.
Thank you.
So moving on into this operating revenue and expense category, um, it shows a little bit about what, what, what the two sections basically show for operating revenue and, and expenses for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And, uh, there, there's interesting data in here, but the main point is basically we operate at a loss. Um, as you can see, a slight loss in this category. And, um, and, and, and that's why this parentheticals under the operating income. But of course, a, a large section is depreciation and amortization. From accounting perspective, that's a non-cash expense. And so that's why we're able to kind of hold our head above water. Um, we believe that this contract will assist us basically in, in, in going one step further and becoming more efficient. One of the reasons might be is that when you look at rate, getting back to rate, we, this is the first year we had a three percent rate increase. And I have to talk about that, the, the rate in just a second by statute. And, and we hadn't had a rate increase for two previous years, from what I understand. So if I go to the next one, Tamara? Next financial statement. This is going to basically, uh, deal with our revenue, um, versus our, our operating expenses. And you can see that basically between the two, our offer, operating revenue is about twenty-eight million. Um, after you actually take in all revenue, it's closer to probably about thirty, thirty-two million. But the way the accounting standards apply, and there's, Heidi and I have had interesting discussions about, about accounting standards as it relates to utility. And, and believe me, you don't want to get into the difference between generally acceptable accounting principles, GAAP, or Government Accounting Standards Bureau, GASB, and how you have to capitalize assets. But one of the problems is, is that when we make a repair, I'm going to try to keep this simple, like we're making on Fourteenth Street, we have to basically go all the way from Fourteenth Street where the, at Seventeenth Avenue, where a major sewer, uh, breach occurred. And we have to go all the way to Sixteenth Street back because that's how far we had to chase bad pipe. And then beyond the intersection, we, DE, uh, F dot, uh, F dot requires us to go fifty feet further on each side. And then we have to go up Seventeenth Ave. That's about a, it'll probably be up to five hundred thousand dollars in emergency repair. So do you capitalize that or do you write it off as an expense? And, and, and that has a lot to do with your operating income statement on how you treat it. Because if you basically treat it as a capitalized asset, then you get to depreciate it. Whereas if you treat it as an expense, it comes away from your operating revenue and hits your bottom line on an annualized basis. Technical stuff, but, but we're kind of trying to work through those issues. And really what it is, is that traditionally, um, there was just a decision made to treat it, uh, a certain way. It does impact the financial statements. However, there's differences of opinion. If you go to accounting professors at University of Florida, Florida State, that you might get different opinions of it. If you go to Florida government account, uh, accountants standards, you might get different opinions of it. I would imagine that if you go throughout the state of Florida, there's a lot of people that do it different ways. And, and I don't know if, if it's wrong to do it one way or the other, but I can tell you the fiscal impact can be significant as it relates to the financial statements of the entity. So we'll keep moving on from there. A statement of existing base rate for the utility, uh, for regulatory purposes. I just want to give you a quick shot on that. So the water rate is seventeen forty-four, uh, per month. The sewer rate is twenty-five seventy-six. So the total base fee is forty-three twenty. And then there's consumption on top of that. Again, uh, those rates are understudied right now and Matrix is under contract. We've already had the first couple of meetings on that. I talked a little bit about the county's, uh, endeavors and undertakings on that. We need to look at that as well. This particular, uh, contract before you should not be affecting, it should not affect rates significantly uh, because it's, it's no, it's, it's really very little more than what we're paying now. And I'll get to that in just a second. The, uh, the, the next item is the physical condition of the utility being purchased, sold, subject to wastewater contracts. I think it's no secret that we know we have an age system. Um, I went over the scope of the facility, the number of manholes, the number of miles. I could probably get up here for an hour in detail. And, and that would be a summary version of, of, of what's broken, what's aged, what's been repaired, what we're doing, how much it'll cost, where the money comes from, who's doing it. Lot of moves to that, huh? It's like a dance. We, we need to continuously repair our system, invest in it. And one of the things is, if you don't, if you don't, we will end up in the same place we are right now. It, 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 it's, 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 it's not a good thing to have to raise rates. But if I go to Walmart every three years and the cost of milk's gone up, then the cost of utility has to go up too because it's inflationary pressures basically. And we have to keep up with the repair and replacement of things. And that's just the reality of running a business. Whether it's Henry Ford's automobile company and all the tooling that's at those plants up in Dearborn and, and Michigan, or whether it's us and the tooling that's in our collections and our treatment system and our distribution system, it constantly has to be replaced. It breaks down. It's expensive. It has to be maintained. It has to be taken care of. Moving on, um, the, from physical condition, the reasonableness of the purchase, sale, or wastewater facility privatization contract. We, I, I think it's smart to bring the collections piece to the wastewater treatment piece because one is downstream of the other and, uh, they really impact each other in, in, in a lot of ways. If we can improve our collection system by eliminating, minimizing I and I, then obviously the, the plant doesn't have as much volume coming to it and isn't stressed as much, um, with that particular problem that's accruing. And so I think you'll typically see that when there is outsourcing of the functions, they, they will often be done together. And, and I'm going to ask probably Ryan Watson and Brian to maybe talk a little bit about that as I try to wrap this up. Um, the impact and purchase of the, of, of the contract on the utility customers. I talked a little bit about that. I don't see it affecting rate. I do see it probably improving service. Um, it's going to take a little bit of time to do that because we are challenged. Um, a lot of people don't see that necessarily. They read about it in the newspaper with environmental types of things. We don't, you know, we don't discharge untreated sewer water into the Manatee River. It usually always comes in. There are sometimes when it gets into storm sewers local, but they're fairly small volumes. Most of the time it does come into the plant. The additional investment that's required and, and the, the willingness of the, of, of the private firm to do that. This is a unique contract to the extent of this isn't privatization where they're buying our asset. It isn't privatization that's being monetarized, uh, through capital project of a parking lot. You'll see a lot of that. Some states have sold their, their toll systems on their highways. And one of the reasons why they do that is they get paid upfront money. And then the electeds and policymakers can say, oh, now we have money to fix something else and, and everything. We own these assets. We will continuously own these assets. We will continually improve these assets. This is strictly an operations and maintenance contract. And when I say assets, both those capitalized assets that I talked about, non-capitalized assets, it's really going to be property, um, plant and equipment. Cars, loaders, we own all of it. The things that have to service the system too. So from that perspective, working with Woodard and Curran, and, and we've just kicked off an initial assessment of capital repairs that are more process-related at the water treatment plant that they've been observed now by Woodard and Curran, their engineering and scientific people, uh, for the better part of six months along with our engineering staff. And they've basically been identified as kind of short-term fixes of moderate costs, not, not major, you know, tens of millions or even millions that can improve the, the, uh, the processing over there at the water plant. So under this contract, Woodard and Curran will do the same with our system and look for opportunities to probably add technology, um, different types of, of, of inline processing, odor control, things like that. That's typically what you'll see. Um, as far as investments, the contract itself says that anything over five thousand dollars per incident needs to be approved by the city. And, and we've had that happen out there at the water treatment plant. And they've been good about letting us know every time. We had to replace a carousel motor and gearbox and everything else. And that's a huge, huge piece of, of apparatus that goes and circulates aeration to, um, to clarify our basins. Keep going on, uh, in case wastewater facility privatization contract, the term and conditions in which the firm will provide capital investment, I talked a little bit about that. Um, the alternatives to purchase and sale of the facility itself. Well, I, I think the alternatives are basically that we are going to have to stay focused and that will detract from our bandwidth to do capital improvements of face it and fix it. And we have a lot of problems with recruitment and retention of skilled labor in that area. I think that kind of shifting it over to an outsourced component, they're going to do a better job with recruitment, retention, and training of the employees. That's certainly been the case over at the wastewater treatment plant, I would think. Lance has definitely walked that, a, a, a lot of our other folks have. But, um, also there's, you know, uh, continued basically strategic kind of planning of how to work and blend the capital improvement with the maintenance and operations piece. So you have this more strategic focus. You have technology, um, benefits that are coming in. So you have asset management right now. Um, GIS, meaning that how our, our, our information and computer tracking of where these valves are and, and different types of assets and things like that. We're trying to complete that on the system. Really what you should be able to do is go to each one of those valves, put a phone on it. The QR code comes up. It tells you when the valve was tested, meaning last time it was turned, that it worked, when it was installed, other, information about if it was repaired regarding packing or other things. We, we have none of that information right now. It, it, it's, it's absolutely incredible that in this year of technology, the city of Bradenton with all of that aperture out in the street does not have a tech, technology platform that has that. As a matter of fact, this week on Twenty-second Avenue East, when there was a water break, we couldn't get the valves to, to turn. And so our, our crew was out there and we finally got the problem remediated. But we have to basically go manual on that stuff and kind of just, I don't know. I guess it's a, a, like process of elimination, hopefully. And, and you wonder why, like, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you test the valve? Some of those valves are so old, we have water going through it right now. This was a distribution line. We, we don't know that if we test it, it will shut water off and then open back up. And so they're almost afraid to, to, to do it because the valves haven't been turned. There's no inventory of active asset management. This is the type of technology and accounting and, and, and maintenance and operation that needs to be done at a minimum. Moving on and completing this, we believe that, that Woodard and Curran will maintain high quality and cost-effective utility service. They've done that thus far, um, over at the wastewater treatment plant. They have a record of doing that in other, um, jurisdictions that they work within. I've already from the past, um, contract, the initial contract, we did check their references and found that their references gave them very high marks. My dealings with them is that, uh, some of them ought to, I, I don't think they do, but they probably should vote here in Bradenton because they're here so often. And, and they live in, you know, Jacksonville and other places, really. I mean, it's almost weekly for a couple of days. And, and then sometimes you might not see them for a few days. That's uncommon for a contractor. You, you think about it, you know, these guys have all kinds of contracts all over the place. There's fourteen hundred employees in Woodard and Curran. And to that extent, when you have that type of relationship-based, um, partnership, it, it's pretty responsive. And when we need something, Mr. Watson a, a, and, and the rest of the team are pretty responsive in, in, in responding to us and getting back and, and us working through it. So, um, we think it'll increase the, the effectiveness of our program and ultimately, uh, carry out the, our obligations to our customers as well. Uh, they have technical expertise. I talked a little bit about that. Um, their engineering staff is, is excellent. Their fiscal, their fiscal management staff, um, that we have been working with has put in for over two hundred million dollars in applications for improvements for infrastructure. And, uh, again, we have that call at two thirty on some of that funding that we'll find out a little bit about today. And that, uh, the last matter as far as item ten really doesn't apply to us. It's, it's that monies that they would pay for purchasing the utility would, would, would go back to taxpayers or rate payers. And of course, as I said, we own the facility. So with that, I think I have probably exhaustively covered most of the information that's required by Florida statute. Chapter one eighty, point three, zero, one.
Mr. Perry, yes. Um, so if you can explain like we did originally, how this would affect our city employees? Because I think that's going to be a question that will come up. Um, where, as we know through the first transition for the wastewater reclamation facility, um, we've only heard good from the employees that transitioned.
Yep.
So, give us an update on that, how this would transition that.
Well, I, I think that... Well, I I think that it's, you know, the employees are tremendously important. There's a couple of different ways to look at that. We have looked at it from the perspective of of the the tran- transition to Woodard and Carron and also other vacancies we have in distribution. So we have several vacancies in distribution and 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 a few other positions where there's gonna be opportunities for some employees to transfer because they've been with the city longer. They have experience in those regards. They performed well and everything else. Um, as it relates to transitioning over to Woodard and Carron, we actually had a meeting that I attended um along with Woodard and Carron people. I think most of the people from the collection section and mechanical were there. And we basically said, this is what they attempt to do. And I think this is why they were successful at the wastewater treatment plant. They try to keep the employee whole. And what I mean by that is they take into account what the employees certifications are, how long the employee has worked for the city, what the employee specialty is, um, what the salary of the employee is. And they basically try to, in that case with the wastewater treatment plant, I think almost all of them ended up getting a a raise, frankly. Um, and 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 one of the things is while you're comparing apples to apples and and retirement programs, we they, as most private employees, Woodard and Carron does not have a defined benefit pension plan. But what they do have is an investment plan. And financially, they have to look at each individual situation. You may be better off in an investment plan. And I, what I told them, when I was asked that question, I said, and I think Woodard and Carron's HR department echoed this and admit, you probably need to talk to a personal investment advisor about which one might be best. If you want to move forward with the city and stay on with them because you're really interested in the defined benefit plan opposed to the investment plan. And the second thing is that uh Woodard and Carron is an employee owned company. And so they get, they get, you know, uh equity interest at a certain point in 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 that as well. Um, I I'll tell you that I think generally speaking, the wastewater treatment plant has done a really good job um and and turning around a couple of employees and really getting them to see the potential of how w- w- their skills and how their skills can rise within this company, both locally onsite and otherwise. And a few of them um haven't risen to the challenge. An example of that is that it, just like in the collection or or distribution, you know, distribution, I should say, uh, uh, treatment has an operator trainee. You have to have a license from the state. Uh, operator C, you have to have, I think, six months as a trainee. And then to go from a C to a B, you need, I think, one year. And then to go from a B to an A, you, I think it's 4,000 hours, so it's a minimum of two, two years. And a few of the people have told me that work for us, you know, I want to put food on the table for my family. So I always took advantage of trying to get this advanced certification and make a couple bucks more an hour. Because it makes a difference, you know, when you put everything together. And then other folks have told me within our department, and some of them are crew chiefs, that some of, some some folks just say, well, I'm good where I'm at. And even though we hire them, both in the water col- in in the wastewater collection, where you need certifications of CDLs, confined space, um, hazardous treatment, heavy equipment operators and the like. We have folks that haven't taken advantage of that. And so the ones that have, there's not many of them. And I've had crew chiefs say, I gotta go out all the time because I don't have enough heavy equipment operators when something breaks. And frankly, what they did at the water treatment plant when they had these operators A through C was they said, we're gonna do just like the county does. We're gonna basically start enforcing this. If you have to get um if you have to advance and and you agree to advance under this, you know, employment agreement type situation that we do with them, but we don't enforce, um, then we we're gonna enforce it. So they offered three employees the opportunity to take the next level test. And Woodard and Carron actually gives them the free material. They have, I think, online assistant type programs with studying the material as well as kind of um onsite tutoring, so to speak, with people with the higher levels that can help the student master the materials. And out of those three students, oh, they give them time off to study for it too. Out of those three students, one person picked up their books. Now, what does that tell you? That unfortunately, some people are apathetic and 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 they don't want to take advantage of it. Okay, that's fine.
But they had opportunity.
They had opportunity and
More opportunity.
Right. And and when you're running a business, you have the responsibility to basically have employees that that will continue to get advanced training. It's just required. And 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 the county basically says, ask Ed. From what I understand, they tell you, if you didn't get it, you're gonna have the, you know, last chance rights to get it. But but sooner or later, you'll get a notice that
Oh, basically, though, all of our employees will have an opportunity to continue on and even a chance to improve their lifestyle if they want to
Right.
with that. Because one of the things to me which was so important was this company with Woodard and Carron is employee owned. So when something's employee owned, they care more about the employee maybe to a point. Not that others don't, but that actually is impressive. Um, one of the things you mentioned about Manatee County rate increase, when you, if you read through all of the stuff that's coming out, um, they're still saying after a five year, and we're gonna have ours, so we'll be able to to do it. Even after five years, they will still be below most surrounding areas on their rate. So that shows you that, you know, we're facing and fixing it. We're not looking at the past. But sometimes the past hasn't kept up with just current times. And there's a couple of uh media outlets in the room, one print, one television, that have been on the tour, uh wastewater 101, if we want to say it, and have done a great job at getting the correct information out. Where the social media and other times, it was releasing raw sewage. And it's a terminology thing, but we were not ever releasing raw sewage. So they've done a good job at at getting out the information. Mrs. Shattuck has done a great job at sharing and getting more out. And that's, I'm I'm the lucky one that gets to go to the plant every day with them when we go over there. And if you haven't been and you want more information, it's something good to look at. How we fix step by step by step by step. And without financial responsibility, we can't fix step by step. And, you know, we have got tens of millions of dollars in all different ways of grants, appropriations, obviously, the
Loans.
loan that we have. But we've got to be in a face it and fix it mode on steroids, in my opinion. We've got to do it right, but we've got to do it where we've got to fix this quicker than others. And when some of the things we've done, well before any lawsuits, well before anybody was looking at us, well before any major, three major hurricanes that hit us in 2024, we were already looking at that. But some of the the uh eyes on us have made us be a little bit more responsible, I think. And I say we in general because, you know, we're not gonna blame the past. But we are going to hopefully for be able to do some things now to get things in order. I'm not for privatizing everything, but certain things privatization can do it quicker, help us more. Help us be more accountable at a point. And if we don't, you know, then our children and grandchildren who are sitting up here will be saying, what did they do 30 years ago? And we see that with traffic. We see it with every other entity that we deal day to day. So I just believe that really trying to figure a way and and and, you know, almost to a user fee, you know, we'd, none of us up here want to get more fees or do more things. But we also don't want to see the headlines in the the media saying that we're not doing anything. And we were lucky so far this year, knock on wood, that we didn't have the volumes. And the volumes of water aren't just hurricanes. It's rain, it's other things flooding, it's hurricanes. But but even this year, it's high tides. How much of the other things that we look at, especially in Ward Two and Four, more than anything, that the tide, the tidal wave makes a huge difference in their ward. And some of it's living in their home. It's driving on their street. And we, in my opinion, have to be responsible to make sure that, as we coined about four and a half years ago, face it and fix it. And, you know, we've really realized that face it and fix it goes to a lot of other things, not just our collection, our um storm and our drinking water. So I just think, um, you know, it's something that is so not only fiscally responsible, um, community responsible to continue to try to fix our systems while protecting our community. And I saw Councilwoman Coker, Coachman, and then Moore in that order.
Okay, I, there's a lot of discussion about the rate increase here, uh, but we're only approving the contract right now, correct?
There's no rate increase on this, so
Okay.
that's what gonna be when the study comes out.
Because there were some things in there. I know, uh, when it was talking about the water reclamation, which said, I think if I was understanding it properly, it was 25%. Um, and that, the it, the revenue that comes from selling the rec- the reclaimed water, that comes from outside of the city, right? We sell it to county and
And you are.
And Tropicana.
I mean, and if we're at a loss at that, I mean, I don't understand that what, at all. Why wouldn't we be at least covering our cost?
Initially, a lot of the infrastructure that bottled over to Lakewood Ranch was paid for by the the water district. Um, we've been having conversations with the water district out there because they're expanding actually out into Lakewood Ranch. With some of these for either further east and uh other types of developments, they actually want another couple million gallons a year. Those rates were negotiated well before I got here and and can't tell you about, you know, what decisions were made about that. But I can tell you that Colonel Lee and I recently, as Monday, had a conversation about and 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 some of the Woodard and Carron people too, with Fred Rogers and the like, as far as
Well, we were in a pickle because because we can only release so much into the river per day. So we had to figure a way to get rid of that water. And I I was on that council at that point. We voted. They paid for the transmission line. And so they could start taking several million gallons because I think our forefathers in our administration saw that at some point we were gonna get into more of a pickle with the amount of water. So one of the things we're doing now, looking at that, is not only, you know, we can, we can release so much of legally into the river now. We can sell it to Braden River Watershed. We can sell it to Tropicana. We can put it on our golf course and we can put it on LeCom. Well, obviously, we're not selling it to our own properties. We're trying to get rid of the volume. And if I'm wrong on this, this is what I understand.
You're pretty close.
Yeah, and it's it's, we're trying to get rid of the volume. Now we just spent 16.6 million dollars to put a well down that we will be able to put that reclaimed water down in the the aquifer of 10 million gallons a day. We're hoping to up that to 15 by the time it's all done. So we are setting this city up for the future. Now, you know, like I said, if Braden River wants more water, and we saw this last year. We were in a conundrum last year because when they have a lot of rain and water, they don't want to buy our water. So we have to, they don't want as much. So that's something that the administration now is looking at what is a, you know, because again, we can't charge them for other water that we're using. You know, we have to. So when you look at capital expense, I know that in 1995, I had to go to a course, and I think I've said this before, because we were getting reclaimed water out of my funeral business that we were opening up. It was on 43rd Street. We had to go through a course before that you could get it because you had to make sure that you weren't doing it wrong and drinking it. That course in 1995 was talking about all the problems with it, the iron in it. So if you're gonna sprinkle your yard, you're gonna have to fertilize your yard differently because the iron would kill the grass in a way if you didn't do it. So all that logistical stuff. But long story short, if we wanted to do a distribution system in our city, the cost would be overwhelming to try to get it to the neighborhoods because of our system. You know, because again, it's putting more pipes and it's putting it down it. Now, if there was a way to do that, would be great. But I don't think that system would ever pay for itself because of the cost of the millions of dollars to get it to you.
We we want to look at that possibly.
We want to look at it.
There's a few places, and particularly in 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 Ward One
Right.
that it may, because we we did have the county look at the possibility of extending it out to Preeco. And they have problems with their their purple pipe out there because they don't have it. And they can't get potable water because the county doesn't let them anymore. They grandfathered in if they were, but most of them are on wells. And in the case of where I live out there, um, because of uh saltwater intrusion and things like that, the wells are kind of fouling the landscape water and everything.
But I think that's something, that's for another day.
It entirely for another day.
Because you would have so much capital expense.
Right.
Most of Manatee County has down their roads that go through the city, some of the lines. They have the, down 43rd Street. I'm in the city for my business, but I've got county water and county reclaimed water. So there may be ways that we can work with the county. But that's, again, this is another day. We've got to fix what we have now and come up with a way to then set it up to succeed in the future. Us putting this water down in the aquifer, um, 1,600 feet actually helps in possibly, if I'm not mistaken, some of that saltwater intrusion because it's putting a level of water that will stop some of that coming up to the 600 feet-ish area of our drinking water. So again, you know,
I just don't, I mean, like, the face it and fix it, and we feel like possibly things could have been done before now. I feel like this could be something like that because using potable water to sprinkle everyone's yards at some point, you know, as we're talking about growth here, um, that'll help take off some of that pressure for the increased need for the potable water if we can use that. Um, and I understand it's it's a big investment and we've got, and it's also a bandwidth thing right now with what we're doing. But I I feel like I just have to continue to beat the drum every time I can about it because I think, I don't want to be whoever's sitting here in those seats later going, why didn't they do this back before? Especially because there are pipes that literally run right behind my house.
Well, that's the county.
Well, exactly.
That's what I'm saying.
But I'm saying to work
Is there ways to work?
Is there a way to work?
There might, that, and that's again, why we collaborate so well with the county.
Exactly.
Is there a way, and it might be easier to pipe some of our water to their plant because their distribution line. But again, that's already always being discussed in ways. But if we don't face and fix the first problem, you know, you gotta crawl before you walk. And we're still crawling right now, in my opinion, to get the catastrophe of last year under our belt to face and fix, which we already were, but it's all about funding and that, so.
Well, I just, I wanted to bring it up. It's, and then it did, I was curious about the rates, um, why we would be at a loss selling um the water outside the city.
Right. If we gave none to them and we had to release it, we would be above our limits.
Yeah, we'd be limits.
Right, yeah, for the permits in the river. So no, that's, and that's why we want it to the golf course, which is saving us money. We want it to LeCom area, which is saving us money. Tropicana, there's, Mr. Perry and I, and this is a little bit off, but Mr. Perry and I have met with some other people that are still looking at ways that we might be able to do something else even at our plant that could do something that's innovative and really only be a user fee, not a cost, capital cost to us. So we're looking every day to try to improve the quality of all of the things, so.
That's pretty exciting as far as the technology.
Yeah, if it if it works. I saw that, yeah, yeah, I saw that. So, Mrs. Coachman.
Thank you. I actually removed my card. No, 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 it's okay, but but I can explain why. Um, when you initiated the conversation about the employees, that was really where my head was. Um, I I think the reason why some former employees may be looking at us and saying, why are you privatizing? You're, you know, you're taking away from the employees. But this is not that. It it's our bandwidth prior to this. No, almost. Um, and I don't think, and we often talk about the past and we say, wow, they should have done. And 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 we don't blame, I I like that, that we don't blame because think about it, they weren't in the position we are with technology and a whole lot of, you know, more information about things and materials and stuff. So, you know, it's kind of understandable. And who's to say 40 years from now, they're gonna look back and say, why didn't they do something? Because their technology will be off the charts. But um, but I was concerned more about the balance of our employees uh with Wood- Woodruff, um, in understanding that they have the opportunity to to
Actually elevate.
Elevate themselves. That that that's important. I'm I'm, I was glad to hear that. And I thought that's what was going on. But how long will, will there ever be a time that we, all of our employees will be doing what Woodruff is doing for us? Or are we gonna always? Wood- Wood- Woodruff and Carron?
Um, I'm not so sure.
If we'll.
Is he, can you ask that question?
Okay.
We're not selling our system where we're totally out of it. We're just like letting them operate it
Right.
from a day to day standpoint while we still own the part of it, which, again, if something goes wrong, we're back. we're back operating it again.
Gotcha.
So, you know, a, again, if there's an op, right now, if you come to the city of Bradenton and you're working there, this is what I envisioned, they're working there and they don't want to leave Bradenton. So they want to work there, they don't, you know, they're happy with the salary, they're happy with all that. But right now, if you get a job, and I would assume this to be true, all of a sudden, you're one of their superstars working there. If you go to a plant somewhere else, you have upward mobility that, because they're going to want the best people, so now you have maximized your level here, can't go anywhere else. All of a sudden, hey, over at this plant, they own how many? Hundreds?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go and now even get, be a better upward mobility, so I think there's great opportunity.
About that question, and the mayor's absolutely right, that answer is, you know, with e-commerce, right, and distribution centers, what's interesting is that most of the people that engage in e-commerce, uh, they don't own the distribution centers. A, a, a separate holding company owns the, the distribution centers and sometimes the tooling in it. But Amazon might run it because they're the one using the distribution, you know, chain, logistics, supply chain type of thing. Here, it's kind of the same thing to the extent of, we own the asset itself, but they run the nuts and bolts of the maintenance and operation business of it because that's their core too. And they have probably more bandwidth than we have-
Right.
And expertise and things like that. I mean, we have to run the police department, the fire department, uh, this, you know, everything in between with planning and everything. And so we're not dedicated, like they are, to running utility-type systems. And generally, they can, wh- when they have that expertise, they can be more kind of employee-centric like we're talking about, and train better, recruit better, and, uh, pr- pr- provide, provide that career path better, so to speak. But our responsibility is to own the asset.
I think one of the most important things to remember as well is government is, we talk about running it like a business, not total business-like. But unfortunately, to get the bandwidth, we would have to hire a lot more employees to continue to grow. With this, we're able to sub out part of that where, when they need something, they have the bandwidth outside of the local part of it to go. Now, you know, because again, we've got to be lean and mean in a way that is helping while not, while transitioning, not hurting of any of our employees that are there now.
That, that's where I am.
The most important, I think, that we go through.
Yeah, that's where I am. And, and also, I mean, is there the potential to maybe even attract more people that are up to the level or the standards that they're bringing to our employees? I mean, are we going to always be, you know?
I think that's what they bring to the table. And again, it's a contract, so if we see something going wrong, then we have to have our administrator and chief operating officer, along with Colonel Lee at the time, um, making sure that those things, and again, proof is in the pudding in today's technology with social media and all of that, and, you know, some of the things that, that, you know, sometimes things happen, and that's where it gets out there differently in the past than in the past. Great opportunity, I believe. Ms. Moore.
Thank you. Um, I have a, I have four questions. Many are simple. One might be a little bit more complicated. Um, I think both of us were not feeling well when we had our one.
I hope you're doing better.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go easy to more complicated.
Come over here, I'm not serious.
I know. I'm trying to contain my germs.
I have no place to go.
No, I'm so sorry. Um, so I hear that, I mean, I hear we're retaining the asset, and I hear, I see in the contract that they're going to be interfacing with residents. And I just want to confirm, because I've had a few complaints, um, I had one complaint about the landscaping vendor potentially using unmarked vehicles. And I did recently have complaints about our staff, uh, from stormwater management, um, aspect. And I just want to make sure that people, residents, when they see people out there doing the job, that they are aware that it's city and that it's okay. Um, so we're, we're keeping our own vehicles and they're using our vehicles, and they're branding like their, their badges, their shirts, whatever. Are they going to be reflective of-
Yeah, I mean-
That they're with the city.
It, it's interesting, that's a good question, to the extent of, we say they wear two patches. One is the city of Bradenton, the other one is Woodard and Current. And, and, uh, they bought me a shirt, nice, nice kind of, you know, polo, polo or deal, and it looks like a city shirt. But there's a little thing that says Woodard and Current on it too. I think eventually, our vehicles will probably be equally branded and the like. And it's not uncommon to do that, where you see that type of partnership. Um, it's projecting to the public that image. They might not know what Woodard and Current is, they probably, most citizens don't. But they typically, when they see the city seal on a vehicle, on a shirt, oh, the friendly ci- city. We, we all understand the brand that I've worked hard to kind of continue to embed, so to speak.
Okay, great.
One quick thing to that, I just saw the last couple days around downtown, you see some work being done on the power poles. Well, it says Pike on the truck.
Right.
But there, then there's a big sticker that says, you know, something about working with Florida Power and Light.
Right.
Because we don't have Pike in this area, but they're in now doing some of the work. So that's the same thing that I would envision, that people, but I think more, ours will be more branded city with the Woodard and Current as the second part. That's what, on that shirt you have, that's what I've seen. Because they have it on the sleeve.
Right.
And our city logo's there, I believe, I think.
Correct. Yeah, I think that's what it is.
So I think to date, I have, you know, um, for the most part, I usually get complimentary, you know, when they are interfacing with staff and that sort of thing, so I would like to keep that. You know, I think people would feel reassured if that similarly contin- that behavior continued and if they knew it was the city.
It's a good concern, for sure, yep.
Um, and then the second one is, is, so we're doing the collection system, I know the INI will be reduced, and that will help. Is there any overlap or is stormwater management relevant to what we're handing off to them? To the extent that, you know, like sometimes, for example, the check valves, um, they're in the same road, they're in the same area.
There should be no-
It's a completely different system and it's not-
But we're not going to fix a stormwa- or a wastewater pipe and dig up the road without making sure the stormwater is being checked. If it, we're not going to dig up a road once-
Right.
Fix the wastewater system, and then come back a year later and fix the stormwater.
Yeah, I mean, stormwater's interesting because it has a separate permit called MS four. And there's both maintenance operations and, uh, other, other types of reporting that's required for the MS four permit. But what Mayor points out is that when you're underground in the right of way, you can go under there and find water distribution, you can find storm, you can find potable, uh, I should say wastewater, force main, gravity, fiber, gas lines. You're underground.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of my question.
And so we want to check that out and, and try to work and minimize any complications and contrications related to that. However, that being the case, those are separate dedicated lines. Um, when we pump stormwater out of our VAC trucks, we can't, eh, when we pump wastewater out of the VAC trucks because there's a break, um, in, 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 in a sanitary line, we can't then put stormwater in it if we have to clean that out without disinfecting the truck.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so they're two completely separate systems, and we think it's going to be fine to have, not have the same entity do nothing, okay.
The, the, the only time wastewater goes into a, into the storm system is if there's, there is some sort of discharge, um, at the road and it pumps up and then goes into a storm drain. That, that can happen, that's the most common way.
But we are looking at, we're, we're focusing on the system being fixed, and a lot of its lining, you say the INI and that. But with the lining, you don't have to touch anything in the road.
Right.
You know, virtually. But the goal is to say, okay, if we're going to fix a roadway, let's fix everything we can at once before we spend the money to pave it. And that's what started in two thousand fourteen, a ten-year plan. And it was, you know, can't believe that's over with, but we need to start focusing on some of that again.
For sure.
And just like in your neighborhood with doing the readjustment of thirteen and three, there's going to be some things that will be looked at that will be fixed before you go back and pave it to come back.
That's awesome.
We have to, that's something that, I know I'm getting some looks out there, but if we don't do that, that's not facing and fixing, and shame on us.
Yeah, I love that. Um, and that was going to be actually my next question. So because we have this massive collection system replacement project happening with the expansion of three and the, and the collection system around that, and decommissioning thirteen, who will be, how are we managing that? Who's, like, is Woodard now going to be the point on that project, or?
No, and, and, and that's a really good question that I think people have to understand about why we're doing this. Is because that is basically a replacement, right, program of major construction. And so we basically have to ha- hire, um, engineers to design it, as you know. We're in the process of that, there's a matter on the agenda that deals with that. And then we have to get a C Mar, to basically utility contractor to build it. After it's all built, and it's all approved and, and, and stamped and everything else and closed out, that will be part of the assets that we maintain, and Woodard and Current will do the operations and maintenance of that system. Mr. Demonia from Construction Services and some of the other folks, um, Mr. Ferenc and the like, really have taken over those types of projects, um, along with the, the technical component that's necessary from an engineering perspective. And Ms. Clayback from the long-term planning, and if we have the other civil engineering needs, you know, project management, we have that. So thirteen and three? No.
Okay, I saw, I mean, I knew that, that those things were on the consent, and I was happy for that, obviously. But, um, but I wasn't sure how, you know, whether it was going to continue to be Mr. Demonia that was kind of managing the project. And then the, the more complicated one was, I, you know, we talked briefly about how I anticipate getting questions about the budgeting aspect of it. Um, when I tally, when I look at the budget that's proposed in the contract and the first slide that you showed us about operating in the red, um, are those, it doesn't seem like, you know, obviously the line items are not matching up.
Right.
Um, this is a one-year budget that loo- seems that it's mechanical and collection. Yours had them separated out.
Right.
But when I add the two, uh, expenses, total expenses, line item, it, it looks to me like we're spending almost five million dollars currently, but their proposed budget is a little over four point five.
Right.
But it seemed like you thought that we were spending a little bit more.
No, actually, when you do the kind of math that, that, that looks like it here, um, and, and, and a lot of it does have to do with the accounting differences of how they're cost accounting certain expenses or capital repairs and placements and where, where they're entering them on a, a general ledger and ultimately how they're handled from an accounting perspective. Um, this, the total budget amount here that they have in, in, in existing budget, and I think it's contained in Exhibit C two, is four point two million dollars. And the total budget amount otherwise, eh, that's being proposed is four point five seven million. And so that difference of about three hundred thousand dollars is basically both transition fee of, of fifty thousand, and then basically roughly its cost plus. And so that difference of three hundred thousand is basically what they think they're going to have to spend on the total budget to do an apples-to-apples comparison.
Where did we get the four point two?
It's on Exhibit C two, on the annual budget that's contained in the contract that you're approving.
That one is, that's, C two says that they're at four point five.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Hold on.
But you're saying currently we're spending four point two?
I think it's a comparative deal that shows a four point two as well.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, they, they essentially, and much like the water, uh, reclamation facility, they, they took our exact budget and used that as their starting point. Um, every year, they'll submit a budget to us during our budget season as to what they're going to need, or what they're projecting to need, and all of that is discussed prior to the presentation of the budget to council. So what you're seeing is, much like what Mr. Perry said, is, is our exact budget for these two, um, areas, for the collection and the lift stations. And then, um, there are some components of the cost plus factor that are factored into what this expense is. So when you, when you look at the budget, or you, or you think of the budget, you, they're actually taking our existing budget and using that as their starting point. And then adding a few minor components in to get the difference of what you're seeing with the four point five.
Maybe if you look at the first slide again, um, you'll see that if you add up the total costs of the collection and the mechanical, it's almost five million. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and, and some of that is, there are some, um, I guess quirkiness in the reporting uh, because it doesn't really, we don't really break out, um, collections and, and, and lift stations because they're not revenue generators per se. Four oh two, which is our water, water and sewer fund, is, is a whole fund. Um, and that's where we get the rate, you know, our ratepayers pay their monthly utility bill. That money covers all of those operations. And so when we break it out, we try to do, we, for this purpose, we were trying to pinpoint as best we could uh, with Heidi and Linda and their team as to what the expenses and what the revenue associated with those expenses would be for those two operations, when they're really not broken out in our budget that way.
Okay.
So it's, eh, eh, you're, you're going to, and you're going to have some depreciating pieces to it that, you know, eh, like Mr. Perry said, are more of an accounting feature. It's not really a, a dollar amount, it's not a cash, uh, amount to it. Um, so it's not, you're not going to see it penny for penny, uh, to be exact. But again, Woodard and Current takes our existing budget, uh, for that area, and again, as best we can for those two pieces to say, okay, this is our starting point, and then we're going to have the, the, the cost plus piece to it. Um, and then there's some, there's some analysis, additional analysis on their part that they need, you know, going forward to say, to really kind of assess our assets. And to be able to bring forward for the next year, what expectation, what kind of, what kind of capital improvements they would recommend? Where are we going to get the best bang for the buck, the most, you know, the, the quicker resolution kind of a thing? So you're not going to get penny for penny in the comparison.
So is it, is it, are we really operating in the red right now currently?
For twenty twenty-five, we did, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
One thing too that I think that's important is, as we look at this, and if they can bring us something that will help speed up a process, then I think we're going to have to look at it and say, how much are, what are we willing to do to help that process go quicker in facing and fixing it? Um, and that's what any good business would do, is say, hey, you know, okay, do we need to find this money? Do we need to borrow it? Do we need to take something? Do we need to, whatever? I don't know, I'm not saying anything particular. But as this, I would rather do a five to ten-year process in three to seven years. You know, and that's important. And some of the depreciation is what really throws that off balance because again, it's depreciating, but it's not hard dollars.
Not a dollar, right.
Right.
Exactly. And, and I think the other thing to keep in mind when we talk about rate, you know, when you look at the operations, and we kind of talked about this when we were talking about that three percent increase a couple meetings ago, when you look at the operations and the fact that we didn't increase rates the previous two years, this is what you start to get. You know, you start to get that operation and, and you're, you're operating in the red, you're operating in negative because costs are expenses, and we may have some additional, you know, things that we had to fix that we weren't predicted throughout the year. Uh, but those expenses rise, the revenue does not. So what you start to get is that off balance. So the, the study that we're doing, the rate study that we're doing will show, here is your, here's your operations, and then plus our capital items that we're looking to improve. So we can have a plan, you know, a five-year plan to say, every year, we need to increase the rate X number of dollars. Because what we don't want to do is not increase rates for several years, and then one year just have this massive rate increase. I think that's just, it's just unfair for, for everybody. And it's not feasible in an operation. So when we look at the rate, and I think this is an important piece to, when you say, when your question is, are you operating in the red? The answer is yes. And the reason that is, is because we didn't increase rates for two years, and expenses went up. So kind of keep that in mind when we talk about rate and kind of have that conversation in the future, there's a necessity to it. And it's not, uh, you know, we talk about capital items and, and getting other people's money. Those, that's what we're doing for those large capital improvement projects. And we've been very successful in doing that. We have great partners with the state and the federal level. Um, and we have great, uh, you know, grant writing, uh, vendors now that are helping us. Jeremy's done a phenomenal job helping us manage it. But when you talk about, when you talk about maintenance, always, oh, yeah.
I'm going to kill somebody over this. I just want you to know.
Glad they're cleaning.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but.
When you, when you talk about maintenance and operations, that is going to be your, your user. You know, that's going to be your rate, and that's something that has to be, it may be a minimal change because the, you know, the cost to operate, um, is more efficient. It's the, just the costs aren't, aren't increasing like we've seen in the past. But that's where your, that's where your financing for that service, for that maintenance, is going to come from.
Okay. Um, and I agree with you that, um, I think there's value to speed. I think that-
Well, I think we've seen in, in its, in its other areas of our city as well, especially insurance, that we're trying to help the employees, that we've not done a great job at at least keeping up a little bit. We've just laid off, laid off, laid off, and now we're at the point where you have to have that bigger increase, and you're trying to, how do you- to have that bigger increase, and you're trying to, how do you, you know, do you cut a little bit, or do you cut a lot? And it's just, you know, we've got to continue to look at ways with facing and fixing something that is going to get done, not, well, let's put, kick the can down the road. You know, and I don't blame that. We all do that at our own homes. We all do it, you know, with things that we're trying to, to get. But it comes to the point, sometime, you have to fix it, and that's the point, so. This, again, we're a little bit off-target of what we're talking about right this moment, but I think it plays into the overall picture. And anybody listening out in the audience, or anybody going to watch this on TV, we want the transparency out there. We want to show why we have increased things to face and fix. We want to show how we're doing it efficiently, whether it's employee numbers, whether it's, you know, farming it out to a point, and what we can do, because we're going to have a lot more discussions on other issues too, that are going to come up, that we have to face and fix that too. It's just not our water. It's a lot of things. But the number-one thing is quality of service. And that's what we're trying to take those next steps. So, I know this is a public hearing, so anything else before we go to the public hearing?
No, sir. I know you have to open it up.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we've had exhausting discussion, which is good, but we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Rudisell, anything else we have to do with this before we go to motion and further discussion?
No, Mr. Perry, just the, the motion to approve Resolution 25-100.
All right. The chair will entertain that motion.
Make a motion. Motion to approve Resolution 25-100 and authorize the mayor to execute Amendment 1 to the operations and maintenance agreement with Woodard and Curran.
Thank you. Second by Ms. Moore, I heard. All right. Any further discussion? Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it's important that we all realize, I think we do here, and I think staff does, but for everyone out in the community, this is our city trying to get more business-like, and to run the city in an appropriate fashion. And that's why I'm going to support this.
And I think, bringing to that point, Ms. Barnaby, when you look at, and again, we talk about the social media, the, the media coverage, when you see those negatives in the headlines, this is us trying to eliminate the possibility of those negative headlines from the standpoint of saying, hey, if we don't face and fix it, then you can't blame people. You've got to say, and facing and fixing it is doing the right things, and trying to run it business-like, like you said, and really taking a positive light on what the future's going to be. So, I appreciate that. And, and again, nobody wants to raise fees, nobody wants to raise taxes, but sometimes, you've got to run a business, or you're out of business. And we can't go out of business, you know, so that's important. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Thank you, Carrie. It's five to zero. We're going to take a break in just one second, but I just want to say one last thing from, kind of on this general topic. But we, and we talk about this a lot, but we are very fortunate to, to not only have a, a good council, I believe, you know, one of the best in our area and in the state, working together. We have our times where we, you know, wordsmith through things and go through it. But we are very fortunate to have the staff that we have. And it starts right at Mr. Perry and goes all the way down. You know, we always don't always agree on things, and, but, you know, some of those things we go through, and the bandwidth that we've carried over the last four-plus years from that July day back four years ago, when Mr. Perry started, and really started to build his team with not very many new people, but a few new people, but we're just fortunate that everyone's willing to work together, get things going, and set the stage for what the next Bradenton will look like. And obviously, it's clean water, it's entertainment, it's different things, and that's what I'm proud to be a part of. And I just think that there's so much negative out there that people want to do, even in our community and others, but you know what? We're going to continue to do this for that next generation, and so many other exciting things. So, we will take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Mayor, thanks for that acknowledgement to our team. They're, they're a great team, and whatever we get.
...were paid. For the public safety initiative, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars was received by the city of Bradenton. Two hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars went to the Ford Department of Revenue. Thirty thousand, twenty-seven dollars for Ford Department of Law Enforcement Training Fund. One hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and eight dollars to the Manatee County School District for school enhancements and safety. And then our Crossing Guard program received fifty thousand, forty-five dollars. And then Red Speed received two hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars, which amounts to one million, one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Our expenses of the money received, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two fifty-six, went to police vehicles supporting some of our cars. And then we currently have two hundred thousand, five, ten dollars that are held for police initiatives that has shifted into this fiscal year. That is the data that I'm required to read. I certainly am available for any questions. We did work with Ford Department of Transportation. They are converting in front of Manatee Elementary and State Route sixty-four. That is slated to become a school zone during the holiday winter break. Ford Department of Transportation should be updating the signage there. If we choose to pursue that for a school zone area, we would then need to repeat a study to find out if it's warranted and then present that back to council to add that location. All of our locations are up and running now. We do bi-weekly, what I call, quality assurance checks. We go out and ensure that the lights are working, that the signage is there. We have not had any terrible issues in court. We seem to have gotten through any of our issues with that and I think the public. And we've marketed throughout this entire time, we've continued to market out publicly, both on social media, print, and interviews. The public has, I think, begun to accept the program. It is effective. I've read you that data. We operate a program where I have no problem speaking to anybody. And if we need to take a look at something, if there was an error, we'll take a look at that. But I think we have a good program that we manage well.
All right. Questions? Kemp?
Yeah, I just want to say initially, anything we can do, I'm fully in support of, you know, slowing down traffic and getting people to pay attention, which is what this does, particularly around our children. The question I had was regarding the financial impact and the amounts we've received. Did we have, you know, now that we're a year into it, did we have an initial study in terms of what the projected revenues would be versus where they are now? Just as kind of a...
Yeah, some of that I wasn't involved in. I want to say that those numbers were estimated north of a million, one point two, one point five or so. I'm not sure that we're going to meet those numbers because folks are slowing down. This is a program where I don't think you can suggest that it's going to be X, Y, and Z because you're... And I like to move away from the dollars and cents. We're looking at compliance. And if we're looking at compliance and we're seeing those numbers going down, then we're obviously receiving less revenue, which I think is the point of the program.
Absolutely.
So those initial numbers are lower than we are now, which is the success.
Ms. Moore and then Ms. Coachman.
I was going to ask about that too, because I agree that the goal should be not revenue but compliance. And so I just wanted to clarify, because I think you already answered the initial question I had. My understanding was that State Route sixty-four in front of Manatee L is going to be a school zone.
Correct. FDOT was able to conduct a study. Anytime you deal with Ford Department of Transportation, it seems to take quite a while. They did do a study there. I did receive word late summer that they have agreed to move that into a school zone and they will be doing the installation in winter break.
And then later, because I was reading the memo, it sounded like what you just said. And then my next question was going to be adding cameras, but it sounds like that is a thing that will happen later if council chooses to do it.
Correct. I think it would be, I've worked here for twenty-eight years. I think it's going to be an area where people are still going to speed up, but we'd have to confirm that with a speed study, determine if it's warranted, and then determine if it's necessary to add cameras, bring that back to you. So there is going to be some steps. If it were to qualify, the council agree to do that, then we'd have to do a thirty-day advertisement, make sure we have a public notice. So there are some steps, but...
I anticipate that, this is just my observation, not, you know, a formal study, but there is a lot of speeding that happens in that area and I think you're going to find it. I felt like there was growing pains in the beginning and I was getting a lot of complaints. And I think you're going to find the same thing is going to happen there too, because people are just so accustomed to whizzing right by it.
I think engagement with the community is important.
Giving everyone a heads up.
Engagement with the community is very important. I spent two years as a traffic officer. Manatee Avenue, we've had many traffic crashes, fatalities, speeding. It's coming off of the interstate. It's a thoroughfare right in front of the school. So I would anticipate us having growing pains if we moved in that direction. But again, I think communicating with the public, ensuring that we have the signage, doing enforcement. We can always have a traffic unit out there as well. We can hopefully bring some compliance there.
So just to bring up something, we just put in some do not block the box areas. If you read the social media that's out there, you know, it's split, but people want us to enforce those laws. If we're enforcing those laws the way that we could every day, it's hundreds of dollars more than these cameras. We just want people to abide by the law and not do get anything. So that's the whole thing and that's what people got to understand. You know, we can't hire enough officers to be at every light and every school zone every day, twenty-four, seven. But just slow down. Slow down.
When I...
Ms. Coachman and then we'll come back.
Okay.
May I respond? When I respond to the community many times with the program, I just point out that we did, this program, the city ordinance statute didn't change anything. We're just asking you to observe the posted speed limits are already there. Nothing changed with how the school zones were posted, although they even enhanced signage. Just follow the law. Slow down and there's no violation. In fact, you get ten, eleven miles per hour as a grace period for it, so just slow down.
Ms. Coachman.
Thank you. And on top of that, if an officer wrote a ticket, it would be more than one hundred dollars and points.
Correct. You're probably north of three dollars plus.
And impact on your license and insurance. My question is, and one thing, I'm so thankful that this council, we stuck to our guns. We got through the growing pains and it sounds like we might be going through it again, but that's all right. We ready. I wanted to ask, does this state statute that allows this, does it expand to neighborhood streets? Because we have so many neighborhood streets throughout the city that people think is a little bit of a racetrack and it's just a matter of time. I just wondered if we could utilize...
It's isolated to the school zones and school areas, which is why these are up. I can say the data that we've received, at least the studies, show that there is an extension of safety into the neighborhoods. People that slow down a block or two tend to carry that forward. The program is designed for the school zones.
All right. Thanks.
Ms. Barnaby and then Ms. Moore.
I just, again, want to state the obvious here, that the monies that we collect, where that money goes was in the state statute as to what we had to do. It wasn't the council making the decision. It was in the state statute and we abide by that statute.
That is correct.
My other question is, is if we're going to do a school zone at Manatee Elementary, will they be looking at a school zone on Manatee Avenue by Miller Elementary?
They studied both schools at the same time. Whatever criteria they have, they've determined that there is not a need to put on State Route sixty-four. I certainly can ask them to repeat that study.
I'm just curious, because, you know, I do not spend a great deal of time going east these days, but I am going west for different appointments and things like that. And if I'm going the speed limit on Manatee Avenue, I get passed. So...
I spoke directly to DOT about that and what was conveyed to be is that they did not have enough walkers. Enough pedestrians at Miller. That's what was told to be. So in that study, that's part of what's weighed. But I agree with you. I almost got plowed over in front of Manatee L, because I did slow down into the school's speed zone. And I mean, I was just being passed and almost run up on.
And we've had a crossing guard hit there.
We've actually had a crossing guard, I think, two officers.
Yeah, yeah, and hit in that area, because people, the speed, they're trying to hurry to get through the light or the turn light, so...
That doesn't count though.
Ms. Moore?
I was gonna, I'm glad to hear that that was one of the determining factors, because I was going to note that, to your question, this was outside of the thing I was going to say, but that I know personally, at least two people, one is the crossing guard that has been there forever. I know they have been personally advocating to FDOT directly to make that a school zone, because they do have a lot of walkers. But my question was going to be, shoot, I hope I don't forget it. It was not that, but it was, oh gosh, it might be out. I might have forgotten it. I did.
You can get with him.
It'll come back to me. Yeah, it'll come back to me.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Gins is always available.
That's true. That's true.
Anything else we need to do, just other than we offered public comment early on and they didn't take it?
I'm not sure if I needed approval, but I would probably say a recommendation of approval for the report, just in case. I've got to submit it to the state, so I would rather have it than not.
We have a motion to approve the information and...
So moved.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Coker, a second by Ms. Barnaby. And we've had discussion. Start in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
And four. Prove five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do. Mr. Perry?
Mayor, the emergency purchase report, which is fairly brief today, item number eight B, includes one emergency purchase. I had spoken about it earlier, which is the Fourteenth Street Tamiami Trail sanitary sewer repair at Seventeenth Avenue. And this is a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project. And one of the reasons why is that because we had worked out on this section of the sanitary sewer probably about, whoo, four to six months ago, as I remember, and it failed again and breached. We had problems trying to chase it back to good pipe that we could tie our repair into. And so we basically contracted with Woodruff &amp; Sons. We had to end up chasing it all the way towards Sixteenth Avenue. And again, it's a DOT roadway, so it included the repair itself along Fourteenth Street, north to south, actually, south to north in most directions. And then had to chase it also along Seventeenth Avenue, both east to west. And so with those repairs, we had to basically do curb-to-curb repaving of the cut, the open-cut repair that we had to do. And state FDOT requirements require us to go, I believe it's fifty feet further on from where the repair area is in both directions. So it was a major undertaking. The work has been mostly completed. I think we were working on Seventeenth Ave, west of Fourteenth Street as the final section of that repair. Dawn isn't here, but is that, I'm getting a nod from our folks over there at Public Works, and so it was five-hundred-thousand dollars. It's an awfully expensive repair.
And Mr. Perry, and I know it's been discussed, I don't know if at meetings or at other, but if you go to the west on Seventeenth Avenue, you can tell there's other issues on that road that are going to be coming up, because that road is like a roller coaster that has been fixed. So those are the things that I think we, obviously, as Ms. Moore brought up earlier about different things that we're always looking at. How do you repair one, two, three? But sometimes it takes a little longer, because you're trying to make sure that we don't dig up a road, fix wastewater, but we're not fixing the water lines or the stormwater. And so this is a, and as we've talked in the past too, Tampa has hundreds of these a month. We probably have tens a month that we find these emergency issues and it's hard to say, okay, and tear up the whole street and do it, because it's just not budgeted. But I think this is something that, again, face it and fix it as much as we can and then the emergencies we get to. This is just information only, right?
It is. It's just information. I'm required to basically, I authorize the repair, and so I have to bring it up at the next council meeting. That's why I did it. There really wasn't much of a choice in there. And I will point out also that that particular area where the cross-sections of the utility are, is, you know, a spaghetti model underground, basically, with all types of different utility that cross over, go underneath, go around.
Well, it goes to our major, our most major master lift station on Seventeenth. All right. Thank you. Next, Mr. Perry?
Next matter, mayor, is going to be item seven, I believe it's seven...
Eight, C.
I'm sorry, eight C, eight C. And that is the purchase and sale agreement between New Rogers Garden Limited Partnership and the Housing Authority of the city of Bradenton. And I think I will proceed to the podium just for some comments. So what is before council for approval is basically authorization for the mayor to sign that purchase and sales agreement. I think most folks know, and the memo outlines, that this is the purchase of eleven-point-three acres that basically is currently owned by the Bradenton Housing Authority. However, the agreement is what I would call a trifurcated agreement between multiple parties. Although the fee ownership is with Bradenton Housing Authority, it's on a long-term lease with the former general partnership that was formed by Telisys. And of course, Telisys, and the founder of Telisys, the late Marilyn, she passed and it went into an estate administration. It was approved by HUD to come out of that estate proceeding and the successor in interest is a company called Wingate, basically. And I want to thank Mr. Allen for bringing Wingate to us and Mr. Tatum, who is the Capitol Officer at Wingate, and I and a whole host of other people have worked on this very, very complex, convoluted type of acquisition. It's necessary, because it basically will provide the landmass and footprint and property for the PAL building of City Park. And that's an obviously important community component of it. At the same time, the southern portion will handle the stormwater obligations within a currently applied for under a concept plan and ultimately will have to be approved on engineered drawings to basically encompass up to a large section of the, both the north and south central, the north-central boundary of that parcel, it's fairly rectangular, down to the south Seventeenth Avenue, all the way to Bradenton Village to the east and back up to some property that we have and are kind of acquiring on the west side. It's an important piece of property. As far as the cost of the property, basically, we are basically taking that property out at the same level that Wingate had purchased the property from. They ended up having to purchase that property for one-point-three-five million dollars. So one million, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The way they did that was they put two-hundred thousand dollars down and basically have a purchase option to take out the rest of it on the lease. And when I say purchase it, they leased the property. They assumed the lease and transferred ownership of the lease based on HUD's approval and Bradenton Housing Authority approval. So they put two-hundred thousand dollars down. They own, the vast majority of the partnership is owned by one individual who was associated with Telisys. She's listed in the closing memo, not the memo, but in the purchase and sales agreement. And so that's about one-point-one-five million. So all total, one-point-three-five million. And then ultimately, what ended up happening was there are different types of administrative costs associated with it as well. Attorney's fees, title fees, administrative fees and everything else. And so we will be purchasing that property to get fee ownership of it. The city will own the property all the way from the boundary up at Thirteenth Avenue to Seventeenth Avenue in the south, and as I pointed out, Bradenton Village to the east and up to a property line next to Rogers Garden, coming down to some other smaller parcels, as well as a parcel we acquired. Entirely necessary for the City Park project. The terms are, again, taking that out at the same cost that Wingate procured it from, that lease. And ultimately, the Bradenton Housing Authority will relinquish their fee ownership.
And they've already approved it through their board. It has to come to us and then it would go to HUD. And we're hoping that HUD, within the sixty days, will process it. Hopefully, the government gets back open this week.
That's basically it.
I'll say a couple of things to this as a process, Ian. Kind of how I've evolved through this process from wanting homeownership in that area and what the Bradenton Housing Authority is now doing through some of the SUG and other opportunities to add hundreds of more homes on some of the properties already owned that they're doing. Bradenton Village is doing a RAD grant now that's going to remodel all of those. And they've already done some roofing. They've done some things that are through the process. I think that Wingate, through John Tatum and his group, see the value of what this will actually change generationally, give a neighborhood an opportunity to feel seen, heard, and growth. And probably when Bradenton Village was done, twenty-five-plus years ago, they felt like they had that at the moment. I don't know if it's ever got to that, but part of it was a community center. And it didn't happen, you know, because it kind of stopped. It did stop the flooding that was from Rogers Gardens apartments that were there. But this gives us an opportunity, not only with other things the housing authority is doing, to build more for those that need it, but this gives it in this neighborhood, an opportunity to save kids' lives. And Monday night at the school board, there was a group that went up through the PAL and community support with SOARN4, the principal at the school, the, obviously, the great board of PAL and the contractor and that. And it was probably a thirty-minute presentation. There was about twelve people that talked. And it was just, we didn't practice the presentation. We just knew what we wanted to say, one, two, three, four. And it was like, school board approved it five to zero to help the process of funding some of that building, because it is creating something that, bar none, in my opinion, will be a campus for Rogers Gardens area, Rogers Elementary School, which I made a statement and it was not in disrespect to that community. It was from a former school board member that was on the board when they voted to put Rogers there. And it was also from several teachers that have taught at Rogers, that it's a failing school. It was not that it's failing in what it's trying to do and the teachers are not failing, the principal's not failing. But we've never given that community a chance to succeed at that school. And I believe that this does that. And one-point-three-five million dollars is a lot of money, but when you're going to change the lives of children forever and a community forever? And by the way, we're getting City Park with it. You know, from the standpoint of logistically, it sets us up to succeed, not only for City Park, but also for the neighborhood community that in January, we'll start seeing more about our strategic plan through Dover Coal and the EDC, that all of this plays into that. Mrs. Coachman?
How did you know? I wanted to say something. Thank you. This whole process, and I'm going to get through this without tearing up. This project is going to revitalize an area that had been stripped. It once was made up of a community of teachers, for all kinds of professionals, as well as public housing, because at that time, black people couldn't live anywhere else, but where it was designated, you could stay. So you had everything and it was good. However, things changed and across the entire country, those kinds of neighborhoods just kind of fell apart, because when it was more acceptable to live where you can afford, people were out of there. So it declined. And then there were decisions to take the youth center away and the Boys and Girls Club left. And that just, that was a hole. That was a void that then the young people there didn't have. Thirteenth Ave moved miles away on the east side. Nobody's going to let their child walk across a highway and not, and everywhere else. Even though back in the day, my cousins used to walk from Fourth Street West all the way to where the pool is on the east side and get chased back to the west side. They got upset with them. But anyway. So, and I appreciate you saying it's going to change generations, because it will, because there has been such a decline and this is definitely going to change things. And I like that the focus isn't just on children, because that's where we tend to. We say, well, we can get to the children. Everything will be all right. That's really not the be-all, because those children go home in an environment where the adults, you know, at the time, they just didn't bother to really pay attention and get an education. So now there'll be something in that area that these young parents, they don't have to travel very far. It'll be right there. And, I'm trying not to, and I'm just so excited about this. I'm so excited that you got excited, because you're the one that's just really working this and everyone, really. I just, okay, I'm going to stop.
All right. Any other comments or anything for Mr. Perry? I know we've talked about this a lot. And again, I'm going to say before we go to a vote...
When I went to say this, I noticed the press left. You know, I noticed that. And I guess this isn't important enough. But yet, but if the press hung around and really promoted this for us, I wouldn't be getting invitations like this. You're cordially invited to speak to the Manatee County Democratic Black Caucus. Your topic is what, if anything, is being done by local officials to reinvest in neighborhood neglected minority communities? That's what I got as an invitation to speak on. And I just wish the press would stay and kind of help us out a little bit, but...
We've got them to help us on the face it and fix it, because it was such social media out there. But this, if we build it, they will come?
Yeah.
And I'm very confident that that's going to happen.
I can't wait till they see it, so they can...
And one thing again, Mr. Perry, I want to say, and it's a kind of a little different group of people, but it's still the top with you and Mr. Williams and a group of people that is just unbelievably dedicated to making this happen, because it would have been so easy with all the obstacles to say, let's just put in a couple of baseball fields and try to figure that out. But I just want to thank you. I want to thank everyone else. And it goes beyond just our staff. It goes to the school district. It goes to Manatee County. It goes to state. It goes to federal, all of our elected officials. It goes to those companies that will make a little money, whether it's the engineering or the surveying or all that. But I believe that they are doing so much more and, because they see the excitement of what this can do to help others. And we have a great community of development people, developers and that. Sometimes that's used as a negative connotation. But the people that are doing this project are putting in more than just, I'm going to make a buck off of it. They're putting in their heart and soul behind it and willing to make a difference for others. And that's so important. You and I see it every day, but most people don't see it. And that was the comment I made to Councilwoman Coachman when our two media partners that were here today got up and walked out when this conversation started. But good for them, because they'll be at the ribbon cut, the groundbreaking's and the ribbon cutting of the next things and they'll see what this city is doing to help its people. And that's important, so...
Those are great comments, but both awesome leaders. This is going to be a showpiece of urban redevelopment. And one of the reasons why is that it is so impactful on the community, the educational components, the opportunistic components for life betterment, quality of life, transportation, economic development, and the redevelopment associated with it. And you put it well, that I've never worked on a project where so many different people had to come together of different disciplines. And really, you can tell that there's a fire in everybody's belly. And we work on this constantly. You know how... You, 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 you know how often I'm on Zoom calls with lawyers trying to do land acquisition, or architects, or engineers, or surveyors, and everybody in between. And I think it's going to be a great groundbreaking when we do do, you know, and, and it's right around the corner. I mean frankly, we've already done some of it with the demo acquisition of land that we're doing today, and other types of pieces. And, and it's the Bradenton of tomorrow. And, and it will represent a generational project of folks that, you know, they, they don't want to hand out, they want to hand up. And that's what we're trying to do.
But it's within months away.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, thirty-six maybe, but, but within months, not, we're not looking at things that are, you know, five, 10 years off.
I think people think of it, and they go, oh, it's going to be baseball fields. It's like, it's so much more.
More than that, in community. It's, it's a playground, it's a miracle field.
Right.
And baseball will help for a few weeks during sick...
Library services.
Library services. Sorin Four, which if you haven't heard of Sorin Four, what the Ross camps in the school district and through Managed Community Foundation have done, look that up. And that's not only for the kids, it's to help the parents. Because when you have children going home that can read now, or trying to learn to read before third grade, and their parents can't read, it's, it's tough. So this is, this is why it's so engaging of the, the community that's come together. But I also want to thank, obviously, John Tatum, in a way, if he sees this, but, because, and, and Ron Allen, who brought John Tatum in, and some of the things, because that was the Bradenton with the estate situation.
Oh.
That was with, all over the country, that was dead in the water. And that group realizing what a benefit this is, to make a difference for a community. Because for them, they could probably make more money off of this, but to gi, to give us the property, get them out, and this is really going to go to fix up Bradenton Village quicker than the other, and, which is in the process already, because people have seen work there. So, Mrs. Coachman, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, sir. Motion to approve proposed purchase and sale agreement, and authorize the mayor to execute on the behalf of the city.
Second.
Second by Ms. Barnaby. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Carrie's unanimously, thank you.
And just lastly on this, I'm glad Corey Fortin doesn't, isn't an outside attorney and fill us by the hour, because she would have thousands of hours into this. But her skills as a former attorney with this type of purchase, the title issues related to it, the survey issues, the encroachments, the different types of land ownership, and everything in between, she's been invaluable to getting this piece of property done, and a lot of the others.
It is like 11 different entities that just turned, and from 150 years ago.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Okay, we're going to move on to the Item D, which is the Public Works Engineering Report. Kim's going to take about 10 minutes, we think we can wrap this up. But I think it's important, basically, because a lot of you have mentioned, well, we want to know like what you're doing strategically for the future. And I think we're doing a lot better job of that, and, and some of this will showcase that, and you'll probably have some questions, so.
Good morning, everyone. It is still morning, yes. So today, I'm just here to give you a brief update on what we're working through in engineering in conjunction with all the improvements that you've heard about from our wastewater side, and the things that we're actually doing, and what you're going to see coming before you. Today, I think we had 11 or 12 items on the consent agenda for construction design services, advertisements for a multitude of things. We have some CMAR's going out, Construction Manager at Risk. We've always done that with vertical construction, we're now moving that into the utility realm as well. So we've got a couple of projects out there, some of them are funded with appropriations, some of them are being funded through impact fees or developer fees, so we've got a couple different avenues there. We are updating our professional services library. There's five that we put out this last month to Erin in purchasing, and she's got them advertised, to start updating and expanding our library, because we would be overwhelming the number that we had on there with utility services contracts and everything else that we do. Survey, simple as survey, we need help. And while we have a great staff, and my engineers today are out learning about CMAR, they're taking classes in Tampa on CMAR, and how to manage those projects, we do need help in some of the things that we do. We've got stormwater planning and compliance, we've got new regulatory requirements, a utilities library, survey and mapping, CMAR for utilities, and CIP project management, which the last two are new categories for us.
And if I could just comment on that, that's been something that's been lacking in the past, which really cuts off a great deal of procurement that would have to be put out to the market, and the work associated with that procurement.
Kim, cough drop?
I'm good, thank you.
So, so Kim, and, and a lot of our other folks over there, Anne, Dawn, and Herb, and everybody else, and David, they said, let's put together an approved library, because the county has that, and, and they can get out this work a lot quicker. When, when CCNA is involved, because it goes over certain thresholds, it kind of puts it out where procurement has to be done a certain way. But this is for doing large-scale construction, but being able to do it based on this continuing services list of contractors, and, you know, e, even things like paving, I mean, we get terrible luck with our paving contractors and the like. But we're trying to expand out so that we can do more, outsource these projects, get more done quicker, more economically.
So Erin's going to bring the contracts that we put out to her in October, in the December-January timeframe, you'll all be seeing those come to you, some a little later for the, for the professional services. But please, we're in a cone of silence right now, but if you have questions, Erin is here to answer all your questions. I know she's going to appreciate that.
Erin probably is not real happy with Lance and I and Kim, because we've, we've put a lot on her to work it through.
She's smiling.
But that's why we brought her in, and she's really good at it.
To keep them dry.
And she's risen up to the bell as well. And remember again, that a lot of these projects are funded with other type timeline grants and loans and things like that, that have timeline requirements, that make them particularly sensitive. And if we don't have the bandwidth or the time to go through that, that, that RFP put it on the street, come to three different council meetings and things like that, that there's a problem. So we're trying to streamline it. You certainly, policies have to approve everything ultimately, but you'll be approving the contracts with explanation, opposed to the various phases of a contract.
Yes.
And when that's appropriate, we'll make sure that we do it that way, and have an excellent that actually addresses that issue.
We've got a couple more things that you'll be seeing a little bit later in the January-to-March timeframe, that again, will come through Erin for you all to look at. Design build for Lift Station Eight, right downtown. Improvements to our lift stations, 27, 35, 24, and 10, that are across varying wards. But with the discussion that, that Mr. Perry had earlier, and the moving mechanical to O and M with Woodard and Kern that you all approved, we are still responsible for the capital improvements there. And this is part of capital improvements. And while panel installation doesn't sound like a big deal, we're going to be spending over $200,000 just for installation. We've already spent $200,000 on acquisition of the panels, but it's another $200,000 for the, for the installation. We're doing some work at our water plant, and as the year goes on, you'll hear more about improvements out at our water plant that we need to make. The Second Avenue East streetscape is going to be coming around soon, finally. I think we got it in good shape. We've got more professional services contracts here, and there will be more coming after that, even, we're, we're adding some more contracts to our library. Streetlight installation, we have a small project for streetlight installation. We've got a drainage project just south of Manatee High School, and Kingston Estates in cooperation with the Fire Department. We voted on what we needed to do, where we have some fire flow issues, and Kingston Estate rose to the top of the choice of five that we had. So thank you for the Fire Department in helping make that decision with us. And, there we go. Couple different things, and I'm going to start with compliance, which is at the bottom corner. Senate Bill 64, which is several years old now, we submit a report annually to them on the wastewater improvements and our five-year capital plan, just to let you all know that that's...
He's going, he's got it, Mr. Big.
That that's something that, that's part of our regular routine that you may all not know about. We have quarterly consent order reports to DEP, and we've got that submitted. If you, Water Keepers, our semi, semi-annual report is due at the end of the week, and that's a huge report, we have consulting services that help us with. In coordination with our, our construction group, we are coordinating inspection on our manholes. We have 4,200 manholes in the city we're responsible for, and another almost 700 manholes are due for inspection by the end of March. So it's a huge effort to do that, and we, we are thankful our construction group's able to help us there. BMAP, Basin Management Action Plan, is a stormwater program. It's a, an unfunded regulatory mandate that we have to comply with, and we have information due to them in January. They, the upper part of the Manatee River used to be part of a BMAP, now the lower part of the Manatee River is part of the BMAP, so that includes all of the city of Bradenton. And we have an adaptation plan, which is a resiliency and redundancy plan, and hardening plan that we're working on. It's the complement to the vulnerability assessment that we've already completed. Stormwater, we've got a couple things going on out there, that's usually our slowest group. We've got some lining that's going on, as well as a, over in Ward Three, Fairfield Acres Drainage Project is kicking off, that's on 25, 25th Avenue West, between 26th Street and 22nd Street. We have a stormwater feasibility study that we're kicking off. I met with a consultant last week to talk about a scope, and we'll be getting a scope to you in the December meeting. We have the Sixth Avenue West and 30th Street West, and this is in that sketchy area that I never remember if it's Ward Two or Ward Three, or somewhere mixed in between.
This is 16th Avenue.
16th, I'm sorry, you're right, correct, 16th Avenue, it's two streets, three, four streets south of Manatee Ave, so...
I think it's fine, but I'm not going to arm wrestle Mr. Tussler.
And we also are going to be doing a small stormwater project up on 22nd Street Court Northeast, where a homeowner developed their property and took the entire storm system out, so, coming back to do that. Water projects, I know I'm going in a weird order here, Braden Castle Water Main, we have a, a hanging water main over our channel that we want to provide a little more protection for, that's going to be, that's already been approved, you all approved that, and they'll be doing that work in December. Downtown Bradenton Water Main Improvements is, we've got the design in progress, we're going to be directionally drilling a water main from Manatee Avenue up to Barcarada to provide the first phase of the loop system for all of downtown for the proposed development that's going on, not just at city center, but out at Westminster, and where the library is, if that ever comes to fruition, so that we are well-prepared and ahead of the curve there. And we also had a new development come in, south of Manatee Avenue, right on the corner of the old City Hall site, they, they brought that to the development review, and this will be part of the water supply for that as well. HSPS, High Service Pump Stations, we're going to be putting in some supplemental lines, you approved the design scope for that today. 13th Avenue West and Second Avenue West, or Second Street West, typically known as Mini Rogers, we're going to be starting kicking off that project. We have a meeting tomorrow to decide what we can do before the holidays, and not cause so much disruption. But we've got that project kicking off. Sedimentation basins at the wastewater plant being rehabbed, and the intake structure and pipe rehab out at the water plant to start providing some additional resiliency out there. And then, we've got, some of this is redundant, you're going to see approximately 160 manholes on the December consent agenda for lining, and this will take us almost completely through the mandate from Water Keepers for the lining assignments that we had. The panel installation we talked about, we have two new power sources we're getting for two lift stations to improve service there. And we have water reclamation facility, our in-kind projects. In lieu of paying fines, we actually have projects that we propose to DEP, and we're doing the reuse tank upgrade improvements out at what's typically known as the Tropicana Tank. And that will allow us a little more functionality in the reuse system. And we're doing some clarifier upgrades on the existing clarifiers, not the new clarifiers. And that takes me through just about all of engineering.
Any questions for Ms. Barnaby?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I don't know, this may be for fire, but is anywhere in here, I know we had some issues with some fire hydrants over in Village Green, is any of that in here?
That was when we had discussed the five areas, we did talk about the Village Green area. And with Ed here, he's got some other techniques that he thinks he can do some of those improvements as an interim step. When we had to actually go through a matrix and say, this is how much money we have to spend, and these are the issues, unfortunately, out at Kingston Estates rose to the top of the heap, and that's why we're moving forward with that one. But Ed has some, some techniques he's going to be using. It's not going to be particularly clean, but he's got, in terms of, you're going to have a lot of road dirt, people are going to have to go around and things like that. But it will allow us to get those fire hydrants functional again.
All right.
Okay.
Ms. Moore?
Minor quick, and I don't want to, we don't have to get down in the weeds of the actual project, but it was just a mental reminder that I'm seeing you to ask about the community meetings for the, the three and...
Three and 13 community meetings?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I know that the grant is up in the summertime, so I didn't know if we needed to do something or talk about scheduling those.
We're going to be working with Tiffany to put out updates, and we'll let you know if there's another community meeting in person, face-to-face, that we'll need to have. The design scope is out, is, is already in progress, or, yes, or you approved today. And so, that's moving forward. And then the CMAR, we still have to go through the process to get that built. But yes, we are required to have public meetings and public outreach as part of that.
Okay.
So we're still...
Yeah, that's what I remembered, so I just...
And we have a beautiful, brand-new fire station that we'll be having those at.
That sounds amazing.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, very much. And then, I don't know if this is a question for you or Erin, sorry, Ms. Jones, but for some of the things that we're trying to collect the library, you guys all know I serve on the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council with City Council Hat, and they offer some of the ser, the professional services, they have planners on staff that do some of that work. And I wasn't sure if they have to respond to the bid, or if it's something that I just need to like introduce, you know, our liaison, so that Ms. Jones might know that there's that available to us as a member of that organization.
I don't know what this has to do with the library, we don't own any libraries.
No, no, the library of professional services.
Professional services.
Us building our...
Categories.
Right, yes, yes.
If they want to be part of it, it's an offer, then yeah.
That does not work.
Okay, so it's not like they're a member and you can just talk to them directly? Okay.
And most of us are for, most of ours are for engineering, or, or very specific services, or architecture services, and not necessarily planning services.
Okay.
All right, do we have to do, this is just information, yeah, yeah, that's what I thought. All right, perfect.
If you all need anything, let me know.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Ms. Playback, do we have, do we have that electronically?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, she can get it.
I'll, I'll get a copy of the PowerPoint, if that's what you need.
Yeah.
For sure. Okay, as we whittle down to the end, I see the team from the Tropicana Project, Sweet Spartman here, and we pull that up, and we have the report. So this matter before you, basically, is a request for approval to move forward with the, we've done the master planning, and now we're at the process of, of, of trying to deal both with the temporary site and the permanent site for the public works out on the, the Tropicana property. We have a beautiful...
It's the city of Braden property next to Tropicana.
Yes.
Because somebody thought we bought Tropicana. I said, no, 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 we just bought the outer skirts of 30-plus acres.
Or anything, we get that money.
Jesus, what are we doing? Blanket so...
This equipment, we're going back to putting stuff on.
Do we have any, do we have an easel?
Or Carol Merrill or Vanna White.
Yeah, but I mean, you got to show it.
Maybe if we moved the fur.
Lean it up against a tomato box.
Got an easel?
You know, in the old days, you did this and then you went to computer stuff and I like this better.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I like seeing it.
You can hold it up.
No, it's not.
So, before us is the architectural model and do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
And the giant pumpkin.
Yeah, right.
Charlie Ram.
Pumpkin's awesome.
I'm so glad I bought those. Really, really.
Good job. All right, so we got to work. So Todd Sweet is obviously the owner and principal, Sweet Spartman. You may remember Ram, he's worked with us before. He's one of the senior architects and guys over there we've worked closely with. Joe is from Weston Sampson, they're out of Fort Myers, is it?
Fort Myers.
Yep, and he's done a really good job on this project and I know you guys have a few other folks there. I see John Toddie and so with you guys. Yeah, yeah, you got Kevin back there too. And so the short version is we've challenged these guys to come up with a plan that involves both a temporary solution as well as the master planning for the, the project at Tropicana for the development of a full public works facility and that's what's before us. What we're going to be asking for is just permission to move forward with the, the architectural work that has to be done, not the contract specifically for that as it relates to any construction, but I thought it was important at this juncture to bring you in and try to get you all kind of in moving ahead mode. So if we could go through this presentation, again, the partnerships that's involved in this, there's a lot of different folks. This slide basically shows the two parcels of land that were involved in the 32-acre acquisition that we did with Tropicana to get that former site that was owned by Tropicana and go to the next one. We have site development guidelines here and they're kind of small, so I don't know if we can read them, but we basically had things that we wanted to do as we developed the site and one of it, one of those items was to centralize our operations. The second item was consolidate and maximize the public works footprint and then minimize the internal street crossings within the complex itself. It has to provide 24/7 access to fuel and we had to separate and provide direct access to solid waste operations, which is a daily major rollout, roll-in type operation, obviously. Establish access from US 301, which of course is the FDOT roadway and maintain service access to existing water tank and maintain existing stormwater flows. One of the reasons why, if we go to the next drawing, is in this drawing you'll see the stormwater pond that's kind of on the northeastern side of the complex. That pond, basically, we didn't want to tamper with it because it's permitted and provides stormwater for surrounding adjacencies, basically Red Barn, Flea Market, our site itself, and I think Tropicana may have been on there as well and potentially the railroad. I don't know if they have any...
Actually, it's coming from 301, it's coming from the...
Have to come up to the...
Good morning, I'm Joe Zong with Weston Sampson, part of the site civil team. So we wanted to maintain existing stormwater flows that come, that already come into the site from other joining properties. So the Red Barn facility on the west side has a swale that comes in and there's a, there's an existing swale that runs parallel to the CSX railroad.
Right.
We want to make sure that we maintain the existing stormwater flows. Also, US 301 has a large culvert that's contributing to the site and it cuts across the site. You'll see that by the smaller pond that's shown on the eastern part of the site, that we want to redirect that swale and get it back into the swale that runs cross, parallel to CSX, has multiple culverts that then cross onto the Tropicana property. Permitting with CSX, putting in new railroad crossings is costly and also lengthens the project timeline for permitting. So the intent on this one is to collect all the stormwater that's generated from this site within the two new stormwater ponds. One of them is actually the expansion of an existing infrastructure on site, control that internally and then discharge it into the swale as it currently flows.
Okay, excellent. Obviously, stormwater's a crucial preliminary component of this type of site development and again, as Joe pointed out, we wanted to do it in the most minimal way possible as it relates to cost and eating away at the, at the footprint of the facility. So this is the scenario that we came up with, which is to basically utilize existing and where necessary, expand to existing types of bio swales and other types of conveyance that's on the site. The second point with it is that we had to do fairly, fairly deep-dive environmental assessments and so...
You're not on the microphone.
I'm sorry. We had Terricon do a Phase One, a Phase Two and a PFAS groundwater study. And as a result of that, what we ended up having to do was file, file with DEP a brownfield designation. And so that site where solid waste is, is really where probably the more significant contamination was and it wasn't, when I say significant, it would be things that would be typically associated with grow fields, arsenic and things like that. It's not uncommon. It was many years ago, but as far as the levels of it went, there were exceedances that triggered the designations related to it. So generally speaking, when you build things on those types of minimally designated environmental sites with environmental challenges, I don't want to call it pollution or anything like that, things like capping it are acceptable under the brown, under the brownfield designation, the DEP deed restrictions and the like. So we thought basically if we could put solid waste over there in that area, it's probably the best area to put it in and cap it with, with, you know, parking area and the like. So what ends up coming out of this is this master plan development with a lot of different components that get on those guidelines. If we go to the next slide, the one after that, that shows a little bit of bio swell, just as it relates to what Joe was talking about. And now we've come to this site and I think, I don't know if you guys can see this any better, hopefully because your screen...
You can expand it on the...
I'm sorry?
If we, it's, you had included this in the, in the packet?
Yeah.
So if you're, if you have it open on your iPad, I've been, I've been just zooming in.
Are you able to do that on your iPad? Good, excellent. Thanks for that information. But, but here basically what it shows is the major vertical construction that's related to the facility as well as surface construction and circulation and the like. And if you look at the reference to building 1.0, that's the fleet facility, fleet maintenance that we have right now. That, there's, there's square footage, I believe, approximations on there and it's hard for me to read it, but I believe that represents 21 or 22 bays. It's 11 times two, so it's 22. We think we can cut that down by a couple, at least. But, but we run a fairly large-scale fleet maintenance program.
And one of the things with building this facility, we will think, we think we can bring more stuff in-house.
Yep.
And hopefully scale efficiencies by doing our fire trucks and maybe even doing other fire trucks that don't have the capability from other fire districts, which then will actually bring in some income.
Yeah.
If you have the proper facility.
Yeah, emergency vehicle maintenance is pretty high demand.
Ambulances too.
Ambulances too for the county and things like that and usually you need a special designation, it's called EV techs to do it. Chief Canada is intimately familiar with all this stuff and Chief Kramer is probably as well, but, but, but we're looking at the possibility of doing that, both for our own services, but for, right now, it's North River, I believe, does it?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, East Manatee's also looking to hire an EVT. 10-8, their rates just went up to, I think, $205 an hour for labor, so it'd be nice to have a quality EVT in-house.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we're kind of considering that, but we'll, 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 that's EV, we will VE and that's, that's value engineer.
But I just wanted them to realize why you might want more...
Excellent point there.
Now's the time to strategically set us up for the future as well as, not overbuild.
Right.
We don't want a Taj Mahal.
No, we don't want that.
But we want something that fits within, why are you looking like that at me, Lance?
I'm looking at Lance.
But, but again, it's, it's the concept of, you know, we've got to do it correctly now because that again, sets up the future.
Yep, yep, for sure. The other vertical structures on there of significance are going to basically be, building number four, which is the central operations center. This is where, really where a lot of the public works personnel are now from our various divisions and sections that are in Tropicana at the headquarters site that we have. We leased that facility from them. We would basically move people into that from the Tropicana facility and basically take that amount of money and probably put it towards whatever debt service would be required on, on this particular facility. By and large, public works, you know, works out in the field. Most of the field folks do that and everything, but they still need areas to muster. They need areas to basically do their planning and have meetings and things like that. When you go over Tropicana, the layout over there right now, which is pretty efficient actually, you know, you have obviously all the engineering and technical people that have to be behind a computer screen and plotters and other things like that, but you also, also have a lot of folks that have to, they're the superintendents and crew chiefs and things like that that still have to have office base, either cubicle or office base. So that's that major structure and try to keep everybody together. Structure number three basically is purchasing. We have a warehouse currently where we basically stock all kinds of items that the city uses, a lot of public works items in there and everything that's over on the annex right now. It's still up and it's a pretty, pretty old building that's over there. I think the roof leaks and it's got a lot of other problems, but we have, we have to have a certain degree of storage for, for those types of items that are maintained in an inventory that is controlled by purchasing. Building number two basically is purchasing itself and they again have a whole, actually, building number three is purchasing, building number two is the solid waste office. Thank you. What else is really important here is the circulation and so the circulation basically shows public works being in the far, I guess it's the northeastern part of the, the area and, and that's going to be depicted over here on this map. There's really three points of ingress and egress, which are really important. Joe and his team and some of the other folks on the project got with the traffic engineers at FDOT to see what we could get for an ingress, egress point and what they recommended was there was a couple of different points that they, they thought were possibilities, but at the end of the day, from a circulation perspective, both internally as well as from a traffic engineering perspective, you can see the curb cut that basically is off of 301 at the end of the divided median there and, and, and that would be a turn-in area. The other point of entry is, is obviously off of Ninth Street East and so you got to ingress, egress at that point and then ultimately at the further end, you would have a right-in, right-out, I think is what they were suggesting, even though they don't do right-in, right-outs, that we could internally make it that correct. I always wanted to say... So, so that's generally what we're talking about. Can we keep going through this, Tamra? Thank you. This is a rendering of what the site looks like as it relates to kind of a 3D dimensional type of situation. Again, you can see solid waste. Solid waste would have basically surface parking for its vehicles right now. It would also have a fueling station, a wash bay and, and other types of additions that need to be associated with our fleet and the way we, we service our solid waste sanitation department. The other facilities on this side, through the middle, kind of the upper section, that's covered storage. We have things like bucket trucks and lifts and other types of heavy equipment that really you don't want exposed to the, to the elements and, you know, they're expensive assets and they need to be basically covered in storage and other types of things we store and cover. They don't necessarily have to be environmentally controlled and air-conditioned closed bay. Some of them do, but, but we have outdoor storage. If we go to...
It was one of our facilities that blew down in Milton last year.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yep. If we go to the next one, this is another picture basically showing this from a different orientation. That one looks like it's off of 301 to the west, a little bit to the northwest angle and you can see kind of 301. You can also see that curb cut off of 301. If we keep going?
That's the end, Mr. Barry.
Okay, so that's the permanent basic design that we've come to and we went through several iterations of the layout of this. The next steps will be DD, design development and then about, right, Ram, do you want to talk right now about that a little bit?
Hi, everyone. Ram Benket from Sweet Spartman. So the next steps typically...
Could you please suggest the microphone, sir, because...
Is that better?
That is much better. Thank you so much.
Excellent. So typically the next steps after a master planning stage would be kind of building and site design development. Typically that design process takes place in three parts. There's a schematic design, there's a design development phase and then a construction documents phase. So that produces the set of drawings that we would then bid out to contractors to then be going to construction. So that's generally the next steps.
Yeah, that's perfect, yep. And John Toddie's been kind of walking us through this and he's been really great on this project as well, internally as a vertical construction project manager.
So as this is kind of the first look at this, what is the first step we need to do now?
I think quite, quite honestly, just probably a motion to proceed with moving through the DD process, the design development process and as Ram pointed out, you know, to be schematics about, okay, how big are these buildings really and, and where are the entry points and other types of things? And then secondly, let's design them in, in, in principle and ultimately they'll move towards a construction drawing or at least a 30 and probably 60, 90%. Maybe use some pre-construction services, try to get them VE'd a little bit and then ultimately they go out to the street for a C-MAR to come back to you to say, well, I can build all this for a certain amount of a guaranteed maximum price. I think that's kind of what we're looking at. Estimated cost on the project is probably VE'd down, I think, you know, Ram's going to throw, him and I gave a nod at a number a little while ago and we took a stab at a different number, but I think we can probably get this down to somewhere between 45 and 55 million dollars for everything. Yep. You asked where that money would come from, basically, it's a great question. We have utility reserves that would contribute to that amount. Remember that the vast majority of public works is utility. When I say utility, it's enterprise. So you've got solid waste over here at Running One Enterprise. You have, and there's reserves associated independently with solid waste and then you have water sewer, you have golf and you have stormwater. And so when we talk about rate increases, you don't have to build this. You absolutely don't have to build it, but if we don't, the little man from the moon isn't going to come down and basically build it, you know, for free. It's a support facility for our program and so we will try to put together how much the allocation would be to basically raise the funds necessary to build this structure. And again, this isn't general fund like the fire department and the police. This actually has a funding source associated with it and that funding source is a rate and maybe there's other funds we can get as well, but we need to know how much it would cost and what we need to do and that's what I'm asking for. This isn't an approval to build it. I want to be perfectly clear about that, but I don't want to get out further than my skis, as I always say, without telling you this is where we're at and at some point, we, I mean, we have to get off that current property that we're on now. That's just the reality of City Park and the project there.
Are, are you having conversations with the drivers in terms of the ingress?
This was all, yeah, this was all done through the process.
Yeah, yeah, they, actually when they were doing mass plans, a really good question, they went to all of the superintendents and crew chiefs and things like that, from what I understand. There was a whole programmatic discussion, right? And usually when you go to programmatic discussions, you get a lot of good information that you wouldn't get from other people, but you also have some folks that want to build the Taj Mahal or things like that. We've seen that, right? And so we don't, we don't... And so we don't, we don't need, we, we need what we need. We don't need everything, you know, forever kind of thing.
I wasn't thinking about asking them for the Taj Mahal, but in terms of mobility and, and, you know, and actually turning these big huge trucks and stuff off, you know,
Oh, yeah.
301 and the timing, because in the afternoons it does-
Oh, yeah.
In mornings, it's, it's okay because they're leaving five-thirty, five-forty-five or what have you.
That's the interesting thing about the rollout and the roll-in and the timing of it. But it's a really good point you have and we took that feedback. And F D O T had a lot of questions, I remember, when I was on that call about particularly Ninth, Ninth Ave, Ninth Street that comes out there and the backup from Tropicana of the existing trucks and we've all seen it.
And 301, yeah. 301 gets kind of backed up around.
Yeah, and then 301 backup is, is crazy as well.
I don't go that way that time of day.
Yeah.
Ms. Moore, then Ms. Coker.
So what you're looking for is just an approval of the, of the concept and then the next phase will actually do determine some pricing?
Yeah, I, I, I think my motion would include the authorization for the administration to advance the, the architecture and engineering forward through the design development and, and up to potential construction drawings.
And is it safe to say, just because of the process and the timing, that we would be looking at, when, when you come back with some, some information about cost, that we would be kind of looking to in the next budget cycle, do the thing where you phase the construction as they, you know, not, in other words, not throwing the entire amount on one year?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
But starting with the future, the next fiscal year, I mean, the next budget cycle.
Right. Yeah, there's some, there's a little bit in our budget this year for the design and what we're looking at now. But yeah, we'll, as we do with our other multi-year projects, we'll budget them in multi-year budgets.
Let, let, let me move a little bit to the side and keep going through this presentation.
Let me get Ms. Coker's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I actually have two questions. First off, what exactly is that amount that we are approving for the design? Do you know that amount?
Um, what, do you know what the total?
I don't have that off the top of my head now. We can get it to you, yeah.
Okay. And, I mean, and maybe this isn't the time for it, but I mean, are we getting any update on City Hall and all that because?
It's coming.
Okay, well, we're, we're planning this and, okay, just want to make sure.
I'm very fiscally conservative, so it's coming. We're, we have meetings in December.
Yep.
Yeah.
If I could, I want, I want to show you the temporary plan that kind of talks a little bit about this cycle. If we can keep going, Tamara, or jump over to the temporary. This is basically a construction trailer. The temporary plan will be built on the southern area of the site, that four acres that we, we own off of Ninth Street East this way. And if we could go to the next, the next one.
It's where Tropicana's sign is right now.
Right.
The big sign.
You can see it depicted on the right lower corner of that, where, where that overlay is. And if we could go to the next one after that, Tamara, thank you for helping me. This is a little bit of a, a floor plan, so to speak, a layout of how that will be in there. And it'll, it'll basically come from Ninth Street East. There'll be a control gate in this area for access and entry. We may add two particular buildings that are fabric type buildings because what's going to be in there is solid waste. This is basically entirely just to, to get solid waste off the site they're on right now so we can continue with advancements and, and, and development at City Park. And, and that's kind of the plan is to get them out of there. We can still have the wash there and we can have their fueling station there, as I remember, Mr. Williams. But the reality is we have to get them relocated. So in order to relocate them, we need just a general kind of area where they can again muster and kind of go over their plans for the day. That'll be a temporary construction trailer, double Y type larger structure for that. And then basically there will be a low impact type of, of, of ground surface done there so we don't implicate the need for, we, we still need a swift mud, but it's called a, a self-certifying level two, is it?
It's called a ten-two self-certification.
Okay.
Ten-two self.
Yeah. So it, it has to do with, if you're not impacting that much of the, the land itself, from what I understand. You want to do this, Joe, your?
Yeah. Yeah, so, so the purpose of this site is essentially it's a, it's a large parking area. The internal island that you're seeing here has forty-seven parking spaces for all the solid waste fleet vehicles. Parking along the, the boundary areas for the white fleets, for the, for the workers' personal vehicles to pull in and out in the morning, park there overnight. We've been trying to expedite this process because we understand the city has certain contractual obligations to vacate your current site. So we wanted to keep the site disturbance and everything as minimal as possible to decrease any permitting. So what we're talking about now is a ten-two certification through DEP, stormwater certification. So the way that the, the regulation reads is that if a site is less than take ten acres, which this is, and you're providing less than two acres of hardscape, then the engineer can self-certify that the stormwater system is compliant with regulations. And what we're doing here is this, the stormwater system is actually shown pretty much in hiding, if you will. So the entry roadway is proposed to be, proposed as asphalt as well as the loop around the parking area. The parking areas are going to be stabilized stone gravel system with a GeoGrid matting that's placed on top for, for stabilization. It's giving about eighteen to twenty-four inches of stone beneath that. And the stone within that system is going to provide the water storage infiltration for the site. Then there's going to be an underdrain system that'll discharge out to the swale. So basically you're containing the stormwater right below the parking lot, trying to be as efficient as possible. There isn't room for stormwater ponds and other things. But what we've been able to do is get, get the F D E P to sign off on this GeoGrid stone system to count as fifty percent hardscape. So in doing that, that gets us just under the two acre threshold because you can see that the site is, is essentially covered with proposed improvements throughout most of the site. So in taking this approach, it helps expedite the process and maximizes the value of the site. Did that cover?
Yeah, that's, that's great explanation. Thank you. And, and the cost with this, I believe was estimated at, was it one, do you remember exactly what the amount was?
I don't know. Not off the top of my head. I just asked, I emailed Linda and Mary to try to get that number.
Okay.
Real quick. But it, yeah, it's, it's budgeted for it.
I think, I think it was like one point one.
I was gonna say.
One point three is that one away.
One point three.
For, for just the temporary?
For the design?
Yeah, no, no, just the temporary. The improvements that have to be done to the temporary.
And is that going to be in addition to the fifty-five million or is that part of it?
It's probably, it depends what that number comes in.
We don't know fifty-five million.
We don't know if it's fifty-five million. Yeah, that's, don't-
Say forty-five.
Right. And, and, and there's potential to, you know, VE it down even more. But the reality is, is that that's going to be necessary probably for the better part of three years.
Yeah.
Because we can't just build this type of facility. It might take four. That, that's a pretty major undertaking that we're-
Yeah, so for four years, things are going to be spaced out over the next several years. One of the things that I'll bring up because obviously people can say, we don't break the sunshine here because we haven't talked about City Hall. We're in a public meeting, we talk a little bit about City Hall. But it's two different funding sources, first off. This is an enterprise zone. So City Hall will be fu- from a funding source that'll be other and, you know, the majority of the sale price of this property, the goal is to cover City Hall. So that's what we're looking at. How are we going to do that? I believe if we would have programmed City Hall four years ago, we'd be paying thirty to thirty-five million dollars if we'd have done it back then. I believe we're going to be able to be closer to half of that. But that will be, you know, so it's out there now, but now it's location, 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 and we'll be discussing that in December. More to come. So none of us have ever broken the sunshine law on that because nobody knows.
No one knows.
Totally in the dark.
Okay, well, and are we keeping an eye on or just factoring in the possibility of the changes that are, could be coming in terms of property taxes? And how does this get affected?
We certainly are.
Yeah, that's, we talk about, we talk about that almost every day.
Yep, yep. But remember, this is utility.
Right.
This is a business we own.
I'm talking about City Hall.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Okay.
But again, that's, that's like you said, we're selling this property and the goal back when we decided to sell this property was to cover as much of the City Hall project with that income from there. Am I correct on that, Mr. Williams?
You are correct. Yes, sir.
So again, when you say, we're not starting a City Hall at zero. We're starting it with more than ten million dollars. So that's the goal.
Yep. And, and the other thing is, when you do have to finance this, they, they look obviously at the rate and, and what your operating expenses are and your revenues are. Our bond ratings are strong over on that side. I mean, they're strong across the board, whether it's general fund and, and special revenue or, or this type of revenue as it relates to dedicated enterprise. They're, they're pretty strong. And so we want to keep them strong. And, and at the same time, what are you looking, what, what would this city look like if we build this? We built now two new fire stations, a new police department, an emergency operations center, a generational, you know, change, change project at City Park and everything else. I don't think you've got a whole lot more vertical construction to do in a new City Hall. That's probably fifty, fifty years, forty years worth of vertical construction. And, and, and we can do multiple things at the same time because this, again, comes out of enterprise and we have to leverage the enterprise piece separately because that's the business. The tax base that we own is related to A V, ad valorem, and property tax is separate and apart. It is impactful, don't get me wrong, for the general fund projects. But we, we have to be able to simultaneously address these fiscally and programmatically and ultimately you as policymakers, there's no doubt.
Yeah, and that's why this has taken a little longer to come to us because we're trying to really have some detailed financial plans going down. But, you know, until we have the, the workshops and the different things, we can't discuss it outside of this room.
I, I don't know, you know, I mean, I, I got, I got a whole nother business called the, the underground business that involves all kinds of utility repairs that isn't underground there, it's underground on the utility. But again, I got to call it two-thirty, that might be really helpful to-
We're hoping.
-supplement us on that side. So we're trying to do everything we can.
Do we need two motions right now?
Um-
One to continue the plan and one, or to continue-
I think we just need the one.
The one to do, working on the temporary build out and the master plan.
Right.
Mr. Rudessell, it's okay to do one motion on that?
Yeah, I was just pulling up the motion that's in there.
It's not.
It's not.
What's that?
There isn't one.
There is.
That I found.
There is in my agenda.
There is?
Not where? Oh, no.
Motion to approve proposed public works master plan for Tropicana site and authorize city administrator to move forward with project design, development, procurement of additional services, C Mar permitting, prepare funding scenarios.
Not in mine.
It's in my special agenda packet.
I'll motion to approve proposed public works master plan for Tropicana site and authorize the city administrator to move forward with project design, development, procurement of additional services, C Mar permitting, and prepare funding scenarios proposals.
Second. Second by Mrs. Moore. Any further discussion, any questions? So plan on, as we get going, we talk about it and sometimes, but we're going to have, start having some more workshops and processes going through, so.
Great.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I'll start the vote in Ward Two. Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero.
Can we find out though, why that's not in Granicus?
Yeah, it's not, it's not in ours.
So now should we vote?
How do you get it, Scott?
I get it.
Do you go online?
Mine was on the online version, the email version. It is an attachment.
Yeah.
Ms. Milton?
I'll research it to make sure or find out why it wasn't in your app.
It's usually.
It, it's on the online version, but it sounds like it's a problem with your app.
See if it got-
Yeah, but it normally-
Yeah, just refreshed.
Didn't work fresh?
No.
All right, Mr. Pa- unfinished business?
I do, I do have a matter of unfinished business and if I could just have you guys take that.
Ten-three, huh?
Yeah, I was thinking, I didn't think that one thing would take an hour though.
You know how that goes.
It was good though.
Yeah.
Make a tomato if you want one.
Just don't throw it.
Yeah, you can't throw them this way.
So I wanted to bring something to the attention of council, which is a change order for the police department, basically. And there, there's several factors that have come to, to my attention and, and that have contributed to this particular change order. It, it's actually what's called a negative change order, meaning that it, 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 it contains within it a multitude of different things that we've prepaid for. And so the, the things that are additional that, that have changed to increase the cost of the project are offset against the one, the items that we've basically already paid for as, as pre-purchased things. But if Ron could come up here, Mr. Allen from NDC, who's of course with NDC Construction and our C Mar, construction manager at risk, I think he can explain a little bit about this particular change order. Typically, I, I do change orders myself and it's within the scope of the authorization for these projects. But because this particular change order, the nature of the, the, the facility itself and, and, and kind of the history of some of the delays and cost increases related to it, I think it's important for Ron to probably address that as the C Mar. But I will point out that the vast reason for, for this as it relates to the additional cost is really, it's related to delay. And the delays in, in, in finishing this project and particularly delays with pulling subs on, demobilizing, remobilizing, costs associated with that and the like. And I think we're all a little bit, a little bit disappointed in the timing that it, that the project's been delayed because you're talking about the better part between twelve and probably fourteen months, according to my calculations. Ron might be, have, have a little bit more or a little bit less of that. But it, it, there's a history about those delays and it kind of started basically when we were ready to get going on the project and we had a site-related delay, which was the designation of a brownfield to the project itself. And then we had, because of DEP's requirements and its designation as a brownfield, we were required to do a SU, which is a subterranean underground examination. And that involves environmental testing of test wells and things like that to try to confirm where contaminants may be and what would be requirements for handling the contaminants as well as requirements for removing the contaminants and, and, and infilling with non-contaminated things of that nature. It also involves processes called de-watering where the material is taken off that does have contamination, has to be either treated and returned or completely removed with unclean situations. And so what we ended up with is having to do this SU. The good news on the SU is that it didn't have a really heavy load of contamination, from my understanding, and it didn't require the more extensive remediation efforts that are associated with certain contamination levels. We also had the situation with A E Comm and, and that dispute that was taking us quite some time to resolve.
We have, we had discussed that.
We had discussed it. I took that to your attention. Right. And, and, and got approval on that one. And, and that took the better part of about three months, basically, as it relates to a delay. And, and then we had the onsite issues with our high-service pump and having to relocate certain utility that is very critical. There are thirty-inch lines, distribution lines, and twenty-four inch lines and twelve-inch lines, and twelve-inch lines that go through the middle of where the foundation is for the facility. And some of that was not necessarily where we kinda thought it was from Public Works perspective, um, to start with. But, but also, remember that we had a contract with, uh, with Gator. We didn't have a contract with them. We had, basically, we had, we had emergency, okay, that, that, they were gonna come in and do some of the relocation. And, and, and they said, okay, we're gonna order some of the equipment and the lines and the, and the valve stops and the saddles and all that stuff. And then all of a sudden in December, uh, after about three months, they said, wow, we're not gonna do the project.
Well, they were supposed to start on a Monday, and on Friday they called and said they weren't gonna do it.
Yeah, yeah. It was rather abrupt.
Right, so it was very disappointing.
Yeah, very, very, very disappointing, yeah.
Unfortunately, their previous owner had died, they got a new owner, and-
Yep.
They weren't honoring some things. And, and again, one of the things that I thought was important, maybe administratively, this could have been approved and just gone through, but if you looked at the numbers, it just was, and, and the political world we live in, it's not right to blame the person that has to get additional money, you know? And that's where it was like, hey, wait a minute, let's, when we get all this figured out, let's bring it to the council and let them understand why. And also, we had three hurricanes in the middle of all of this-
Okay.
That didn't help either. So, um, I think we can get to the point of, you know, where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, that's where we're kinda, you know, looking at that whole delay type situation. And then ultimately, um, Woodruff did come in, and they did a really good job to, to, basically, and, and our folks did a pretty good job. Um, I wish we'd done some things that would have helped, like soft digs and, and other things in advance. But we had to relocate some really sizable utility, like-
But I will say, probably, one thing that impressed me the most was, and it's the local contractor. It's because of a local contractor, we have a building that I think anybody else probably would still be dirt. They were able to figure a way to start on the back end of the project, build the parking garage, and then start to build where they could build, knowing that hopefully, they wouldn't be delayed.
Right.
But if, in reality, we could still be looking at another twenty-four to thirty months if we would have been waiting for these other projects and situations to happen.
Yeah, I think the contractor would-
But Ron and his team, through all the people, started at a parking garage. You never build the parking garage until the end. But they were trying to keep this project going, to keep a timeline. So, you know, and that's not giving my friend kudos, that's looking at a project outside the box and saying, they were trying to help us. And unfortunately, all of these other factors outside of the contract, the C Mar, was not their fault.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with that. And I think if it had been a different contractor, you're absolutely right. They might have said, look, we just have to pull off and-
Or we can't start.
Yeah, we can't start, or, or we're gonna pull off and tell us where you're ready.
Right.
What ended up happening on this project, and Ron can speak to this a lot more, because it was kinda on again, off again, you know, that, that creates a problem. But if you go completely off, it might cost you more on the back end to come all the way back on. And, and who knew that it was gonna be like one delay after another that I pointed out? Ultimately, Woodruff has gotten in there, they've done that. I think we're good to go. Um, you can see the site looking like, you know, a lot of it's been done, both site development, all of the vertical structure going up. But they couldn't put the main foundation in.
In full transparency, that's why we're bringing it, even though you possibly could have approved it. Ms. Coachman has a question.
Yeah, um, it started off, the delay was when it was designated a brownfield. Was that the first delay?
Yeah.
I'm surprised that that was a surprise.
So are we.
Well, yeah, that's a really good point. And, and, and I, I, the only thing I can tell you about that is that early on in that whole phase, we, we talked to the architect on there. The architect said, well, we could do some underground DD, but we don't wanna pay for, for a lot of that if we're not sure where the buildings are going yet, and everything. And they never went and did things like ground penetrating radar, might have found, um, where some of that utility was. So they tracked it. They didn't do things like test wells, um, and other types of things that might have detected in advance, so that they had that type of, their, their answer to it, and understand that, that delay, that three-and-a-half month delay-
Mm-hmm.
I read their contract carefully, and I actually, I, I actually hired a construction litigation attorney to look at our contract with them and say, how much of this stuff and what kind of case do I have? And there was challenges to it, as it relates to, to responsibility, fault, scope of contracts, obligations, professional standards, industry standards, and things like that, and everything. But the reality is, I think, for the benefit of getting the project complete, based on an architect that had basically walked off the job. They, they walked off the job. And, and, and they said, yeah, you know, you're not gonna sign the change order, we'll walk off the job. And they did, and everything. And then what we had to do-
And Mr. Perry negotiate the change order that we brought-
We had to modify the services, the construction administration, and other aspects. Please, please.
Good morning, Ron Allen, uh, NDC Construction Company. Um, we always hate having these kind of meetings, but I think it's important for some of that information to be truly understood. It was defined as a Brownsfield, um, what I think you have to go to the next level. The Brownsfield had had its preliminary, through the architect, um, approval that the site was okay. When we started digging test, um, our first footers and our first for the lakes, basically, or the retention ponds, we started getting, um, a whiff of something that is not conducive, which required us then to stop, have the architect engineer and the city go back through that SU process. We talked about, come back with the whole program of what do you do with the dirt that you're digging up and you're, and you're now creating, 'cause most of that dirt had to go offsite because we didn't need it for fill anywhere else. You have to then go through and get a written, um, engineered, um, way to re, to, to remove that, that, uh, material and where it needs to go. I can't take it to the landfill, it has to go to a special area. So, we went through about a three-and-a-half month process with that. Then as we started into the next round, uh, getting us started, which is our first site, uh, on the, on the, uh, the program, um, there was a contractual argument that, that came forward between the city and the architect, uh, which, uh, Mr. Perry described as about a three-and-a-half month delay. How that affects us as a construction manager, that was at the beginning of the project. And if you're familiar at all with construction, at the beginning of the project is when we submit tons of submittals, uh, for concrete design, for, um, almost everything in RFIs, is you're trying to get your product on, especially long lead items, ordered. Well, we went through a three-and-a-half month process where we were submitting our submittals and our RFIs related to that start of the project that were getting ghosted, uh, in the process. So, that set us back again for that three-and-a-half months because we weren't getting any information. I couldn't even order the stone that was necessary for the undergrounds. I couldn't order the foundation rods. I couldn't, I couldn't order any of those kind of things because I had no direct approval, which is required by contract, from the architect. So, that's our next three-and-a-half. So, we finally got through that portion of the process. And then, we started, um, working on the building itself. The garage, and, and again, uh, we appreciate the, the comments from the mayor and from Mr. Perry. Our team did say, the last thing we can do is just stop. What can we do? And so, there's a lot of activity you've seen over there, but it's almost been like a jigsaw puzzle of where we can go and where we can't go. Um, when, then the next part was in the main part of the building, the most northern part of the building, uh, which houses most of the functions for the police station itself, um, were interrupted because we had to move this thirty-inch, when I say we, the city, had to move this thirty-inch water line that wasn't where it was supposed to be. And again, that's nothing, I think, unusual for the city because that line was put in, I don't know how many years ago. Um, but A, it was in the wrong place. So, when they started digging for it, they didn't find it. When they did find it, now it was too close to our building that we had to then have redesigned done so that if there was a failure of that thirty-inch line, it didn't, it didn't create a problem with the foundations for the building. So, we had to go back in, have the architect redesign those things, as the Gator discussion of calling and saying, you know, we're ready to start work on Monday, by the way, we're not doing it. Um, then the city had to go through the process of, of engaging Woodruff. Woodruff had to learn, um, you know, go through their normal processes. And they physically just finished, um, that portion of the work, um, two weeks ago. So, we are now, as of two weeks ago, officially a hundred percent full bore back in the project. But we haven't even been able to do the foundations on the northern third of the building. So, that's where we are. So, we're roughly about fourteen months, uh, to sixteen months behind schedule, from a schedule of the whole building. We've been able to cut that down some because we've been doing the work we could do to get to this point. So, now we're at a point where we have, we know where we're at, we know where our, we, we do what we do, and we're comfortable, we're okay now, as far as getting rolling. But we, we have that fourteen months that we've been able to do some things. So, we're down to around ten months that is really truly a delay process for us, uh, which is costs that we have to incur. The change order has three components to it. It has, um, as, as Mr. Perry described, it has the reductions in our contract based on the, on the DOPOs, which are the direct owner purchases, uh, for savings of sales tax, which is a big neg of it, somewhere in the neighborhood of a four-plus million dollars. Then you have our delay, which is NDC Construction's, because we're, we are event, we are specifically fourteen months behind in our ability to capture our fees and those kind of things in the process. Then the third component is, we have, we've gone back to all our major subs because with that delay comes material increases, delay, delay claims. We've been able to curb that to somewhere around three-hundred-thousand dollars, uh, which we think is a great idea, or a great realm to get to that point. And those are mostly, I would say ninety-nine percent are material escalations. Because, as an example, you know, an electrician who is buying fixtures that they thought they were buying them a year ago, so they've gone through a price increase. And it's those kind of things. So, we feel very comfortable right now. This is where we are, um, in, in the process, to be able to deliver the building, uh, the end of October, beginning of November next year. Um, again, albeit if we don't have any storms, um, that show up, knock on wood, but we were fortunate this year. Uh, but that's sort of, I don't know, Mr. Perry, if that's a, i-if that's sort of the overview, um, that you wanted, um, you know, we're dedicated to this project. We've tried to work every day that we can work out there on a square foot of land, um, that is allowable for us to do. But I think the last piece was the water, the whole water pipe system. That functions for almost that entire section of the, of the city. And so, it, it wasn't something that we had any interest in trying to push the envelope on, uh, because the last thing we wanted to have is, is for my superintendent to call me and tell me that the tank is draining, um, which is a big scare for anybody, um, if you had an, if you instantaneous of that tank draining. So, that's the, sort of the overview from our perspective.
Have Ms. Coker.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
So, um, I don't know who to answer this, but what does this put our budget to now for the police station? What number are we gonna be at with the change order?
Thirty-four-nine?
Yeah, probably both.
Well, if you notice during some of the things we've talked about, we're saying thirty-five million, we're still under that, right at it.
He just said thirty-nine.
Thirty-four-nine.
Thirty-four-nine is-
Oh, thirty-four-nine, I didn't hear the four.
We're still within what we, we didn't anticipate this delay, but others.
Okay, yeah.
And we are still working every day, you know, we have a contingency, and we're working on, we try to build that contingency as we go. Um, so, we hope that, that when we come back to the end of the project, that we'll have something to give back as part of that process.
I, I think it's also mindful, just on that, is that, um, you know, we did, as, as Mr. Allen's pointed out, we've done the direct owner purchases and things like that. And so, it probably won't increase the, the, the GMP of the project in and of itself, but the total budget of the project and project costs will go up to probably thirty-five. But remember that we, this is land that we already owned, for the most part. We had to pay, I think, a hundred seventy-five thousand for the rise and piece on the back that we ended up having to take on. Um, it, it was a nice piece of land because of the size of it, that, in a good area geographically, um, for the police to use programmatically to kind of centralize their, 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 uh, police operation. Um, but it was a former gas plant-
Yeah.
And, and had all kinds of other industrial types of things in the ground that we did not know about. Um, and so, even though we didn't pay for it, you know, sometimes-
You pay for it.
You pay for it, yeah. Free, there's an adage called free pays twice. I'm not so sure that there isn't that going on a little bit here with-
Ms. Coachman and Ms. Moore.
Well, I wish you would've asked me, 'cause I could've told you. It, it was something going on funky on that, that plot of land, and it, I pretty sure thought it was a brownfield without even looking. But, um, my question is, when we had to do that little tweak, that little redesign, did we lose anything, square footage or anything?
It really, when I say redesign, it was only a foundation redesign.
Okay.
It didn't change the building at all. It's just creating a more substantial foundation, which allows a, a failure of that pipe not to affect the building.
Without tearing up the building, yeah.
Thirty-inch line, if that thing ever blew out, it would blow out probably twenty feet around it.
Oh, wow.
You have a couple, you've had a couple of street activities that I think you've noticed what happens when you have a failure. You put that right next to a foundation, you better be sure.
Ms. Moore.
I just wanna make sure I understand what, what has happened and what we're doing. Um, so please, I'm gonna reiterate it, and then you tell me if I'm wrong. Um, so, we had an architect that had a problem not locating these problematic underground lines. And then we got into a dispute with them, which I believe we settled, and they continue to act as the architect?
Let me, let me rephrase that a little bit. The business dispute with them wasn't necessarily about these underground lines. The business dispute with them is that their proposal contemplated the police department building, I wanna say, a thirty-five thousand square foot building, no parking garage, and a whole host of other things. They said, oh, after we're through with programming and DD, you've got these elements. And so, the total project cost has now gone up to thirty million, when we thought it was gonna be eighteen to twenty. They get, by their law, uh, by, by, by their contract and associate it with, uh, the, uh, what the building standards are under the state, they get a certain percentage of that. I think it was five-point-seven-seven percent, as I remember. And they said, now you owe us million dollars more because you built a garage and you built a bigger police station. That's what the, that's what the crux of their, of their grievance with the city was. And when, when I said, well, we're gonna have to talk about that, they said, okay, we'll talk about it, but not only for so long. And they ultimately pulled off the job.
Okay, so they're gone?
No, 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 they're not gone, they're-
They're back.
Yeah, we-
Okay.
We, I took that to you, and-
I got that part.
The option about, you don't, you don't just fire a contractor. It's not like, well, get the, get the window covering guy, and now I'm gonna go to Home Depot.
Well, I wasn't sure if the settle, if, if, or how you landed on the dispute included them continuing to perform, or if the nature of this, of the resolution of the dispute was-
So, we'll go back in time. The resolution dispute involved us agreeing to basically pay them about nine-hundred thousand dollars more, nine-hundred thousand and change, as I remember. And they were gonna drop some of their contract administration services and things of that nature. And from what I understand, even moving forward, there have been all kinds of requests for information on this project. And-
And then who?
Our, 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 our C Mar has had to work with them through that in, in, in somewhat of a challenging manner. Let me be polite about it.
The work, the work that then we had to pick up because they were dropping off, who performed that work? Us internally or NDC?
We thought what was in there could be cut, frankly. Uh, we thought it was a little bit fluffy, uh, I think on the front end, and that we could handle it. But there still has been work with requests for, and, and let me have you take-
Yeah, and I, and I will tell you that I'd like to take this minute to, to share that I can't thank the city administration and, and Public Works because they're having to pick up some of those responsibilities that are not being performed. So, it's sort of has been a, a committee of us as NDC and the city, sitting down and defining what is, from a good constructability standpoint, we need to have the architect engaged in, in those things that are more aesthetic or, or non-structural, non-issue-based. We've been using a lot of the city staff from IT to, to the police department, I don't wanna forget the police department in this, in making some of those decisions that would have been a RFI, which is a request for information to the architect response. And we've taken that into our hands, uh, with the city, uh, folks to, uh, come up with what that, that decision is. Uh, so it's sort of been a little bit of a piecemeal, um, not affecting quality or anything to do with the building, don't get me wrong. I don't want anybody to think that that's the case. But we're, we're saying, we've gotta get this done. If it, if it's not coming from somebody, we're gonna figure it out. And that's sort of what we did.
Okay, and then, um, and then we purchased some things, some materials, it sounds like?
Yeah.
Sales stuff.
Right.
Which you, which you then received.
But then we didn't need it anymore, or had to purchase some different things?
No, no, you, you purchase, it's called DOPOs, uh, direct owner purchases.
Right.
You, you buy those things directly. We do all the paperwork, we set it up. You basically just sign the purchase order and, and cut the check. And if the state's listening, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say much more than that because, um, we don't, but we handle all the processing and it comes through our subs, the whole nine yards, but you directly buy that. And so-
Well, I'm just trying to get at, did we buy stuff that we're not using?
Oh, no, no, you, you, like, as an example, you bought concrete, you bought the HVAC system equipment.
The generator.
The generator.
One-point-three million on the generator. Seven percent on the generator comes out to about, what, ninety grand?
Yeah.
And then for Gator, we did have to pay Woodruff, presumably, separately.
And that's not included in our discussion, that was purely with the city.
I think it's relevant to the cost if there was a, you know, problem there. And then, and then now we're, we're here with the change order- and then now we're, we're here with the change order and it is because the delay, contractually we owed fees because of the delays.
Yeah. By, by contract, we should be finishing this project this month. So when I signed my contract as NDC with you all, it included so many months of general requirements, a fee, those kind of things. And basically it's been a year that we're out where we have kept people on the job, kept it going, doing those things.
They were still doing work.
Yeah, we're still doing work, but it's going to take an extra year and those dollars have to be covered. So that's the first leg. The second was, was that we do have a few major subcontractors that have asked for delay claims. So we've worked those through. So we know where we are today. So we feel comfortable that this is the change order that gets us to conclusion, but it's a necessary, because from our perspective, we should have, we should have been able to collect all those dollars by now. And we're now a year later before that happens. So.
Then what happens at the conclusion though? We pay more dollars.
Well, you, you're paying a change order fee now, but at the end of the job, it, it, it's our original contract plus that change order becomes the total contract at the finish.
Which is under the 35 million.
Correct.
And we're still trying to work that down. If we would have had a different contractor, it would be a lot more.
Yeah. I, I guess as a side note, I will tell you that had, and not that we're anything great, don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to, to toot our own horn, but if we had stopped the process of the work on day one, when all this thing started happening, I bet you that we would probably be looking at a claim in the neighborhood of three to three and a half million dollars if we'd have stopped.
And two more years.
And we, and we had lots of conversations with the city administration, police about should we stop? Because is it more beneficial to stop or not stop? And we chose to, to keep going through. So, you know, I think we did a, a, a valiant effort with the city under the circumstances to try to keep those dollars down.
Thanks.
Ms. Coker, you have another question?
No.
I don't need any, any motion.
No, it's just information on. And if you want any more logistical information, go talk to Mr. Perry.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I actually audited what, what was bought to me by NBC for the subs and things of that nature and general conditions. I mean.
What he's saying is he beat me up. Okay. That was not my first, my first report that went in. It's not what we're talking about.
Right. He, he actually was able to bring it down fairly significantly, both from their cost.
And we're still working to see if there's some more.
Yeah, we're still working on it. But the reality is I have a binder of, of everything that's documented because I said to him when him and Les came in, I go, how? And we talked? And, and what? And, and it's, it's there. It's pretty well.
Well, Mr. Allen made a crucial statement at the end of his conversation now, that we would be probably moving in, in the next month or so instead of 12 months from now. And that's what we had planned. And that's where the snowball of whatever's going on.
Yeah.
Serious unfortunate events.
But the good news is, is that, I mean, it's a, it's a world-class police station. It will be a world-class city asset when it's done. And it's not uncommon, unfortunately, for when you're dealing with sites that are like that, to present different kinds of challenges. I guess what is uncommon is the hurricane season last year.
The three hurricanes.
A contractor that pulls off out of nowhere, there's certain nuances associated with it.
This was a new one for me.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the information. Anything else, Mr. Perry?
No, sir.
All right. Counsel reports. We'll start in Ward Two.
How did I know that?
I, I was very happy to be able to participate at the memorial program for Veterans Day yesterday in Palmetto, as well as the Veterans Parade. And I want to thank the Manatee County Veterans Council for all the work that they do to put that on. And seeing as we're not going to have another meeting before then, would like to remind everybody that Winter Wonderland will be on Saturday, December the 6th. And Realized Bradenton has worked very, very hard to put a wonderful, family-friendly event together. And also shout out to them for the long table dinner that was Monday night because that I thought was, other than the fact that it was really cold and windy, I, I, I thought it was just amazing to be able to sit outside and, and help raise money for an organization that does so much to represent the community. And then I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. So please, if you're traveling, be safe. If you're not traveling, enjoy the weather here. Hopefully it's going to warm up a little bit.
Thank you. Mr. Schusler.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, now that we're on the other side of a major national election, just want to say how proud I am to represent this great city of Bradenton and to work alongside Mayor Brown, the fellow counsel and city staff that every day keep moving our city forward. So, you know, happy to be represented and do that. In mid-October, I attended the Florida Redevelopment Association with Councilwoman Lisa Gonzalez and where the Bradenton Community Redevelopment Agency was recognized with two statewide awards for outstanding new building projects, Astoria on Ninth and Met One, both new housing communities that are helping shape the future of our city. And finally, last Saturday, I joined Mayor Brown and community volunteers for the Keep Manatee Beautiful cleanup and mulching in downtown Bradenton and Village of the Arts. It was great to see so many residents come together to take pride in keeping our city clean and welcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
Um, I, let me see if I can read my notes. I wanted to, since we are not meeting, I don't think, again, we're having a Thanksgiving event that Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So that will be something to look forward to if you're not pre-cooking, as I usually do. I also wanted to just, I mean, as a, to keep everyone in the loop, I shared a video with Mr. Williams, who gets the brunt of my videos and pictures, and Mr. Perry. The wind on Monday, Monday night blew off one of the hoses of the temporary. And so if you're curious to know what sometimes our staff has got to deal with, it was not good at all. If you can imagine that.
Oh, no.
It was just spewing in the air like it was like snowing. So it was really horrible. But I just point that out because I can, when I heard about it, I immediately, like my mind just went right to, oh my gosh, the poor guys. Because by the time I saw the video, it had been corrected. But by the time, I mean, but my thought was, oh my gosh, what they had to probably deal with to get that under control. But, so anyways, if you would like to peruse, you can ask them about it. We, I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Shattuck and her team and everyone who was involved. I emailed them and I know they know, but to let everyone know that if you were not able to make the, the Halloween community event at Fire Station Two in the evening, it was just so great. It was so well-attended. They ran out of candy. Somebody had to run and get more candy. It was just really, I feel like a testament to the hope, you know, that this kind of new thing can bring to a neighborhood and a community. I think it speaks to you and your excitement at City Park, being in that area. And I think the way you, I wrote it down, you said, investment in our community. And I really feel like that translates to fostering, you know, neighborhoods within our, our city community, just really feeling like they're, they're getting attention, that they're feeling cared for. And I think that kind of thing is really important. So for me, that kickoff party was just really representative of a neighborhood that is excited that things are happening and that the, the city is actively investing in that area. And thank you to you guys that did all the heavy lifting to make that happen. And then finally, another thank you. Mr. Williams, I get a text about this as well. But I am, I know this is nerdy and silly and small, but for my personal family, every year that we see the snowflakes go up, it's like, oh my gosh, the holidays are here. And last year, of course, we couldn't do that. We couldn't make that happen because of the storms. But I did not know they were going up. I had the joy of just driving by and seeing the, the guys putting it up. And it was just so exciting and my whole family geeked out on it. So thank you. The, the snowflakes are back and I'm very excited about it.
I'd like to thank Ross Peterson and his group for doing it.
Yes. I will happily thank him for that.
And the banners.
Yes.
Down Main Street.
It's those little things sometimes, that low lying fruit, you know? So thank you all. And that's all I've got.
Ms. Coachman.
I'm so glad you brought the snowflakes up. But I also want to say ditto to Ms. Shattuck. Oh, Shattuck. I said, I gave you an R. Everything has been, all our grand openings and, and activities have just really been phenomenal. And I did not, I was not able to make a lot of the different events in the past few weeks. But it was very touching when I got to my office and saw the different things. Okay, not cry parent. To commemorate the, the new fire station, even though it moved out of War Five, is across the street in War Four. That's okay. I can still walk over there. But, but it, it, it just was just absolutely wonderful. And the snowflakes, I'm so glad you brought that up because one night I was driving and I saw the snowflakes and I'm like, they're not usually there. You know, I, I just did not remember the snowflakes ever being in certain parts of MLK. And yeah, it was just really nice. It did bring a smile. I've even had some neighbors say, oh, y'all got snowflakes? I was like, okay, maybe. But anyway, just really, really great. We have a great staff from top to, and I don't like saying bottom, because as far as I'm concerned, what we call the bottom is the foundation. It's like a flip pyramid, you know? The bottom is what we got. And it's, it's what makes us great. And not to say you guys, you know, admin, I'm sorry. I'm just going to stop talking about that. Everyone is wonderful. I liked the, the phrase that was brought up about Farm Week, keeping ag alive in 2025. It kind of made me think of War Five is Alive. You know, and that was really catchy. And we just had a lot today. We had a lot. We talked about face it and fix it. You okay over there, Mr. Perry?
Right.
We talked a lot about face it and fix it. And, and normally because we talk about it to a nauseam. But anyway, we have to talk about our water system. But this council is finding that we have to, we're going to have to face and fix a lot of things across the board. Not just buildings, but our people. We have great people working for the city. And when we compare, and I know somebody's going to say, why is she bringing this up again? When we compare salaries and how people are compensated, we're not as up there with surrounding communities. And, and, and we're talking about rate hikes and all of that stuff. I just, and I know that's what you're talking about too, when you say face it and fix it on other things. Because we've got great people. We're working them hard. And it's going to be hard to get 100% plus quality when you've got one person working as three or four. But I guarantee you, if we, if we can, you know, attract people to add to what we have, we will definitely be 200, you know, percent and plus that. Don't know why I went all into that. But face it and fix it is really deeper than the water system. And that's a lot of stuff, and I don't want to really bring it out. We hashed it out pretty much. Oh, wow. It's just great to be in this city. I can't, and be, and be up here being a part of it. I won't see some of you until next month. So happy Thanksgiving. And just find some time to reflect and be with family because they are very, very important. Even though you work for us, like, like you, you know, it's 24/7. It's not, you know, enjoy family. War Five is alive.
Thank you.
So much more I want to talk.
Ms. Coker.
I'll try not to let my snowflake envy show here. Anyhow, first and foremost, had, had an opportunity to go with, with, I think, everybody up to Tallahassee. Oh, no, Ken, that's right. To see Senator Boyd installed as the president designated. And I don't know that the general public understands how important that is for our community to have him in that leadership position and what it, what it go, what it does for us. And I thank him for his leadership and am looking forward to having that extra representation up there for us because there's a lot coming down the pike and at, at the state level. So it'll, we're very lucky to have him. Also, I know I said it in my invocation, but I, I don't think we can ever give enough gratitude to those who served and are still serving in the armed forces. As we, I, I, as a proud daughter, granddaughter, wife to veterans, I just want to thank each and every one of you again. Freedom is it free and we're very blessed to have that. Also wanted to, with regard to the Farm City Week, I too, Mr. Garrison, for him to come in here and do this. It, it really, it's so important and it's, you know, we are losing a lot of our farmers and I think even society is getting more and more wanting to be closer to the source of their food. And so I'm so, we are so blessed in Manatee County to have such a, a big agrarian community and to have this close by. And so I'm, appreciate him coming and it's exciting to hear so many in the 4H, in the school system to hope that, you know, that the next generation will continue on with that. And I guess I as well want to give thanks and wish everybody here a happy Thanksgiving. And I hope you have a good time with all your families. And that's it.
Good. Thank you, everybody. And obviously, a lot of things have been said. I'm just going to touch on Realized Bradenton, what they do, obviously the farmer's market, which is now the public market, but we all still consider it as that to a point. But what they did with the long table and seeing 100 people go out there and sit on the street in that blowing wind and sand. It depends where you were getting the sand. But just a, a great group of people that love Bradenton and it just was really a great event. Saturday morning, we were out early spreading almost 600 bags of bark mulch that had a great group through Keep Manatee Beautiful. Jennifer Hoffman and her group does a great job. We were able to help out a little bit there through basically around the judicial garage and then through Village of the Arts. And you could see people knowing that we care about them, you know? And that's what a lot of people say. Some of it's just knowing that you're touching them. Can't say enough about what our Veterans Council in Palmetto, having the parade over there. I talked with Mayor West, obviously, why that was going on and get a little bit more involved because it's easier to do their streets than it would be to do our streets. And, but just celebrating our veterans and families and, you know, all of us have had family members and, and some have had the family member that got killed in service. And it's just an honor to, to see that it's still celebrating. And when you, unfortunately, Mr. Skeen, who was our oldest living veteran here, 107 died last month. And, but was a great gentleman to talk to. Talked to him probably about less than a year ago. And 107 years old and still there. So it was just amazing. But sad to see him and family and him passing. Obviously, all the activities downtown, Winter Wonderland, Thanksgiving coming up with the event before that, and just anything downtown is, is happening, which is spreading to the rest of the city. Just remember, the snowflakes look great, the, on the lawn, you know, all of the ornamentation out there. I've been involved with that since 1998 as a volunteer when we did that. And the last time we purchased those, the city had to save the money and purchase them. It's getting close. Irv would probably say it's getting close, that, that the, it's getting old. So we might be having to look at that because that is such a staple in our community that brings things. And, and I know we lost most of it in Ward Two and never been in Ward One on the polls, but maybe in the future, we can find some areas to kind of, to share the love of that. Because I did hear about it when DOT changed the light poles on Manatee Avenue from 15th Street West to the west. And they did not put plugs on them. So that's why there was no more lights on those. And DOT has changed some of the rules where if it's a DOT pole, they don't want external cities doing stuff. So we may have to look outside the box.
So much they can do with solar now.
Yeah, maybe there's some opportunity. We can do something. But, but again, great things. things. Fire station opening was, was unbelievable, and seeing something that, that started about four and a half years ago with Chief Edwards at the time, and Chief Gere rode with us, and, you know, finally, something came to start it, get it done, and move on, and that's what we did, but for the good of the, the whole, and, you know, I'm looking forward to, obviously, other buildings opening up. We know what the Peace Sock was, we know our fire, police station, talked about, but just all the other stuff underground is just fun to see as we come to the year-end, you know, calendar year, but we still have another meeting, but just those things, and the staff is working unbelievable, you know, and you can go down the whole list, everybody in this room that does everything every day, and, and, uh, some of the people you see more than others, HR, IT, you don't see as much. We talk about a lot of the other crap, right, Irv? So, can say it, but, uh, but, yeah, we're doing it, but, but in a good way. No, it's all the good stuff you talk about, and I, you know, I was disappointed that our media left, right when we talked about one of the most important things in City Park and Community Center that's happening, that those are the things that we should be celebrating. But when people see what we're doing, and, you know, it does cost money, and it's different ways, and, and again, we've got a great staff working out things, and, and, uh, unfortunately, we can't talk about them outside this room for a lot of it, but timing is everything, and it'll happen, so appreciate you taking the faith in that. Um, Chief Kramer?
Uh, thank you. Uh, briefly, um, well, two things. One, yes, there was media who left. There's still media who's here, and that's the people from ME TV.
Our media.
Who really are the ones who get our message out, I think, to more people than ever. Um, thank you again, Rob, and to Ron, who's obviously left, uh, for what they've done to keep the police bill going. I think it was my first meeting I went to when we found out about that 30-inch pipe, and I, I thought it was shocking that nobody thought to look for it before, but, you know, that's the way things go. But again, thank you all for keeping things going. Um, and I've got other stuff, but, uh, really just want to thank everyone who's reached out and said prayers for Pastor Don. He's still in the ICU, um, such an integral part to our department and, uh, the spirit, the spirit of what we do, um, lives through him, so, uh, please keep him in your thoughts and prayers, and the family, obviously, uh, I don't say thoughts and prayers, I just say prayers, because that's what he needs.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chief Kennedy?
Yeah, um, our open house was a huge success, so, uh, thank everybody that attended. Thanks for, thanks to BPD, Public Works, Manatee County EMS, all the volunteers that participated in it. Also, Tiffany, want to give her a shout out as well, because she was, uh, huge into planning and, uh, coordination with everything, so, thanks again. Uh, looking forward to doing future open houses with maybe the next one at Station Three.
Thank you. Irv, can you come forward, please? Unless you don't have any comments, but I have a question. Colonel Lee?
Yes, sir.
Um, and we did not discuss this earlier, but it's not really something, but I think you can probably pretty much go off the cuff. Um, the email we got last night about low tides and all of that, or yesterday, can you give us an update on some of our low-tide areas that we're going to be checking and making sure that we're, making sure our equipment is working to the best of its ability?
Yes, uh, specifically, the, uh, we, the, the, to kind of bring everybody into the, the scope of the conversation, um, there'd been some discussion about whether the valves, the check valves that had been previously installed, uh, one section was done by contract and the other section was done in-house. There was discussion about whether those valves were working. Um, I believe about two weeks ago, um, at your request, we met out there with, uh, we had staff with, with, uh, motorhogs, large pumps, uh, to, to pump out one of the inlets just to, to see, um, you know, what, what the dynamics were going, and, and as a matter of fact, we, we discovered that they were holding. Uh, we, we, uh, put a mark, uh, on the inlet, uh, and, and watched as the tide on, on the outside of the seawall, watched as the tide came up, and the, the level inside the, the inlet stayed relatively the same.
What it was. And, uh, that's, that's the west side.
That was the west side.
The east side, I know there's some other that they're working on.
And, and on the east side, uh, it, it, quite interestingly, um, uh, a project that had previously been done over on, um, on, on the Manatee, near the Manatee Memorial Hospital side of Riverside Drive, um, we discovered that, uh, inlets there where, where water had been coming up, w- we thought that, uh, check valves had been installed there, and it come to find out, um, they were scheduled, and for some reason, it never happened. We coordinated with the contractor, they came in, put them in, and I know, uh, Mr. Perry runs in that area on a regular basis, they've been fairly dry. That contractor then helped us over on, uh,
Riverside Drive.
Riverside Drive East, further, uh, over to the east near, uh, 20th. We installed a check valve there, uh, where previously there had not been a check valve, and it appears, uh, we, we're going to continue to evaluate that one, because it, it runs at a different angle. In- instead of going through, uh, down the, the seawall, um, uh, in, into the river, it runs actually diagonally across, and that, uh, check valve was, was, was the source of a lot of local flooding. So, it appears that that one is holding, and we will continue to evaluate, um, the efficacy of, of those check valves, uh, but again-
As well as now that the tide's low, we're going to have people going out and making sure everything is flowing and clean and-
And, and that's, that's, uh, again, part of the maintenance effort that, that, uh, we're, we're doing to, uh, uh, again, maintain, uh, the system. Th- this is something that, as we, as we look to the future and we start, uh, thinking about how we move ahead, we will incorporate these experiences and the maintenance effort into what, what we eventually decide we're going to do, um, to address, because this is, um, uh, this, this, as best I can tell, and I, I'm, in my second year, uh, this has been a reality since I got here. Um, and I, I've heard folks say, "Oh, well, this didn't start until five years ago." I'm not so sure about that.
It's gotten a little bit more often.
Right.
But it's, it's happening. One of the things that, that, um, I don't, again, this past weekend, we had the highest of high tides, three inches.
King tides, yes.
And we're having the lowest of low tides. Yesterday was unbelievable, I've never seen it that low, but, um, it, it's something that we know, we're looking, and we aren't just doing nothing.
Right.
And unfortunately, when you live at it and you see it every day, you do have a little bit more of a, what are we doing? And, and that's part of it, but.
And the-
Miss Moore has something.
I just, I wanted to clarify, because I think that the email that the mayor was referring to-
Well, I get a couple of them, though.
Oh, okay.
A bunch. Irv and I get a bunch, and Rob, and Lance, and-
Is the one that, um, it's a section of Riverside that does not have the check valves, and it need, it just needs something, you know, you, this is the area, this 24th Street to 20, to Brown, um, and the resident that sent that email has an engineering background and likes to share that, uh, knowledge, but I just wanted to clarify, I mean, maybe I was misunderstanding, because maybe it was another email, and I was super excited about the check valves on 20th West being looked at and, and replaced, but this particular area doesn't have any kind of mitigation at this time, so I think that the purpose of the email was just to, uh, give a heads up to when, to the way that you can look at the tides, so that you can gather data to see what will work in that little section.
And, and we do have a project, uh, that, that's on the horizon to, to put in, uh, an additional, um, additional drainage capacity for, for local issues, because-
Yeah, I think we talked, that's the one from Manatee Avenue.
Right, that's the, you-
To hold more capacity.
Yes, and, and-
But I think this one, the email to that, too, is, I was talking about another one in that one, but, um, it's, I think he feels that if there's some blowout of when it's low, if we can clean it out, that might help some of the capacity.
And that's, that's what we're doing.
I knew we were planning on it, and that's what I wanted to use.
Exactly, exactly. But again, um, the, these are not, uh, issues that, that, uh, there are no miracle fixes here. This is, uh-
It's, I, I consider it mitigation. You're not, you know, I know you can't perform miracles, so we're just, I mean, I'm, I look at these little things as, how can we just ease it a little bit, you know? There's going to be water there, of course, but it would be nice if they didn't have to watch the tide to get in, out of their house.
Uh, again, um, we, we, we prayed for Pastor Don, uh, we're going to need prayer for that, because it, the, 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 the influence of the tides and, and, and the moon is something we're-
You don't control.
Yeah, we're, we're just, we, we take advantage, we, we leverage that to be able to do, uh, what we can, so, um, and, and that will, that consideration will be part of our fix in the future.
And one of the things that we did realize with doing the ones on River Build Award West is the basins with the duct valves are working, but they now have put hydraulic pressure on the wall, and the, it's blowing up underneath and through the wall. So, we fixed one thing, and it, we were there, we saw it, and we found, and so, you know, we can try to temporarily patch some of those, but we believe that it's just going to keep moving, unfortunately, so, even though, and we said that when we put the duct valves in a long time ago on east and then recently more on west, that this is a trying, it's not necessarily going to fix.
Right.
And, uh, we'll, not today, but another day, you can give the seawall 101 that you gave me and why things are a lot more difficult than they seem, "Oh, it's easy, just put it wall down." No, that doesn't create it, so. All right, that's what I wanted. We are talking about it, you're working it, you answer the emails, and sometimes they don't get the answer they want, but it's, at least we're processing it.
And, uh, again, there's, there's not many problems we can't solve out there without a little more money, so.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I have something just super quick. Uh, Councilwoman Coker, to answer your question, back in 2025, we budgeted $5.9 million for the Public Works Annex, we're carrying over 5.4 million to continue the project of the presentation that you sold today. So I just wanted to give you that answer. Uh, the other thing I wanted to thank, Ms. Shattuck, and I also want to thank, uh, Ms. Rebecca Desch.
Yes.
Who also helped, um, worked very closely, um, and, with Tiffany and, and did a, a great job at Fire Station Two. But I also want to thank, uh, Chief Kramer and, uh, and Chief Kennedy and Chief Gere. One of the things that I've noticed that I've tried to get over the years is both of our agencies to participate together, and the last two major neighborhood events we've had, they've done that, and that's because of the leadership that we have today. So I just wanted to thank the both of you, and please pass that on to, to Chief Gere, and, um, but that, that's what we need to see, you know, we're, we're one city, you know, one team, that kind of a thing, and it's really represented, uh, today, so I just, I'm very appreciative of that.
Good, thank you. Mr. Perry?
No, sir.
Mr. Rudisell? All right. Thank you very much. We'll be adjourned. Happy holidays.